Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It is time to begin the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty regular council meeting. I just want to tell you that I am going to be sitting in this chair until Mayor Frosch joins us sometime later this afternoon. I'm not exactly sure when, so I hope everybody had a wonderful summer, really enjoyable. It's nice to be back. It's nice to see your faces. And so we'll begin with the agenda item. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items of the regular afternoon council meeting.
So move.
Second Ferguson.
Okay, so moved by Councilor Long and seconded by Councilor Ferguson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or errors and omissions? Seeing none? It's carried unanimously. Okay, I have to do a little scroll here. Okay, item number two. We have, I'm happy to report, a new member to our staff in the township of Langley. We've been advised that Sandra Ruff is our new Director of Finance. Sandra comes to us with twenty years of financial experience in both the public and private sector. So I want to extend on behalf of council, a very warm welcome. I'm sure we'll very much look forward to working with her and meeting her with the future. I can see her on the screen, but I don't see her face yet. So maybe at some point she'll actually pop up there. Okay, the adoption of the minutes. The regular council meeting of... The meeting held on July twenty-seventh. So I got to get used to scrolling on this equipment. So the next item is the adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So move Ferguson.
Okay Ferguson and Davis, any errors or omissions? That's the time to ask. Seeing none, I'll now call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Minutes carried, thank you. Okay, so following along the agenda, there are currently no delegations today. Also, no presentations. Item number E, reports to council. Item number one. E one agricultural land commission application, number one zero zero three eight zero. May I have a motion, please?
So move Long.
Counselor Long and seconded.
Second.
Counselor Kooz. Is there any discussion on the item? Okay, seeing none, I'll now call the question on E one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, Counselor Davis is opposed. Thank you. Item number two is the heritage alteration permit application, number one zero one oh one five. That's at twenty-three four zero zero Mavis Avenue. May I have a motion, please? Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes.
And seconded by? Counselor Kooz. Is there any discussion on the motion? Do I see any hands raised?
Yes, my hand should be raised.
Okay, I don't see it there, but thank you, Counselor Richter, you can go ahead.
Okay. I'm just concerned about going forward with this without a public input opportunity. We know from very recent experience with Fort Langley that making decisions without having allowed them to have full input into those decisions is very controversial for them. So I would actually like to defer this particular report until we have had a public input opportunity from the people of Fort Langley about this application. There are some things within the application that do raise some questions for me. For example, the parking variation that's described on page thirteen. So there's only going to be one parking space for ten spectator seats. That seems awfully low. I don't see too many cars today that you could fit ten people into. As well as the proposal includes conversion of a portion of Royal Street to a parking lot to provide an additional sixteen spaces. I really strongly believe we need to allow public input. So I am happy to put forward a motion to defer, as I said, until we have that public input opportunity. Oh, and the other thing is the trees. There are twenty-nine significant trees on this property, but only four will be retained. That is concerning. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Richter. Do we have a seconder for that motion?
You know, I'll second it, but I did have my hand up for input. But I guess we could, and so did Counselor Long. Are we going to run through the speakers list and then entertain the motion?
Okay. I apologize. For some reason, I don't see hands on my screen. So that's okay, but I think it would be advisable then that we have some discussion and we can subsequently entertain the motion to defer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Davis. You can go ahead.
Okay, now I see a couple more come up, but this is a cultural center.
Can I raise on a point of order quickly?
Yes.
My point of order is if you're not seeing the hand, we are all seeing the hand. That's a concern to some of us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not used to looking at this screen, so now I see where it is, so thank you very much. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I think, I think the problem, Acting Mayor Patrina Arneson is that there's four or five screens there and you've got to see which one you're looking at. Okay, this is a cultural center, museum, it's a library, it's got a conference facility. It is a direct benefit to the township of Langley residents now and in the future. But however, I would support public input. I have no issue with supporting public input. I'm sure from Fort Langley, it could be, there could be an awful lot of, it could take quite some time to do also. But I would support public input on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Counselor Long? I can't hear you, Counselor Long? I can see your list.
You're muted, Bob.
Oh, there you go. Oh, somebody.
Let's try that. How about that?
There, very good, thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm very confused, Madam Chair, about this notion of no public input because it does clearly say on the agenda package that their written submission opportunities are allowed and I don't know if I've seen a bunch unless I've missed some. The other thing is we had, we had public input with a public information session a short time ago, maybe a longer time ago now, that was overwhelmingly in support of this project. And I'm certainly in complete support of getting this museum going and the cultural center. And I don't want to see anything that will hold it up or delay it. But I do, I'm concerned about the words "not getting public input" when we are following legislation and written input is certainly allowed. Could I have a clarification from staff, Counselor Arneson, regarding the public input procedure for this project?
Thank you, Counselor Long. I will defer to Mr. Backen on that matter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Seifi, are you up there perhaps to provide a summary of the purpose of the EJP and make perhaps a comment on the extent of the public competition on the day?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I guess, a word of...
Madam Chair, this is Counselor Woodward. I have a point of order, just to, if I could raise that?
Yes.
So I've had a serious technical problem on my end at the start of this item. Apparently, my microphone didn't work, so I need to declare a conflict of interest, please, on this item.
Oh, okay.
In the waiting room, subsequent to this completing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Seifi, can you proceed? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say Mr. Backen may wish to, I guess, either readjust himself or readjust his microphone because he was hard to, hard to hear. I'm sure it was the case with the rest of council, other than yourself, Madam Chair. In any case, I understand the question is about public input. First and foremost, public input has been provided as part of the current process. The current process being what council is actually being asked to consider this afternoon, which is the heritage alteration permit. As part of the heritage alteration permit process, there's been a notification to the public that their input may be provided for council's consideration prior to council authorizing issuance of the heritage alteration permit. Prior to that, having said that, and I guess the clerk can provide council with an update as to whether any written submissions have been received or not. Prior to that, a number of years ago, there was, as Counselor Long referenced, a public information meeting that was put on in collaboration with the architects and other stakeholders to inform the public of the plans conceptually in terms of a cultural center slash museum slash library for public purposes. It's an institutional use, it's a cultural recreational use that is allowed according to the Township zoning by law in any zone. So there's no need for rezoning of the subject site because, as I said, as a public facility, it is allowed to be located in any zone, subject to council's direction. Beyond that, because of the fact that it is located in a heritage conservation area, it requires council's approval of the form and character of the building to ensure it is consistent with the surrounding area and the heritage context of the historic Fort Langley. With that in mind, it has been presented to council for authorization of a heritage authorization permit that would then assist the township to proceed in collaboration with the Quantland personations to construct the museum and slash cultural center without delay and, I guess, in the best economic interest as well, given the fact that it's been in the works for quite some time. So I don't know if there are any specific questions. Counselor Richter referenced the parking variance that's being requested, and that is true. There are other variances being requested. In fact, there are five, but staff supports all five variances. In particular, with respect to the parking variance, it is based on a technical analysis that was done by a consultant that essentially determined that the township's requirements in this particular case are not necessarily current with the requirements as being anticipated in terms of a multi-use facility. So the parking requirements are not necessarily being stacked up on top of each other, but rather there is a provision or there's a technical basis and a technical support that then based on the fact that the parking demand will not be conflicting with each other. The parking demands for the various uses will not be conflicting with each other, can safely be accommodated as well as the on-street parking. Now, in addition, and I'll end my comments by this. In addition, there are provisions in the Township of Langley zoning by law, in particular Fort Langley Committee Plan, that provides for a fifty percent reduction of the parking requirements if underground parking is provided for commercial uses. Now, this may not be a true commercial use, but in fact, I think, based on the technical analysis, based on the fact that it's a public facility, based on the fact that there is a technical rationalization being provided, staffs fully supports the fact that it's actually more than fifty percent of the parking requirements that's being provided underground.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seifi, for that explanation. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes. Thank you for those comments, and I appreciate hearing Mr. Seifi give us that feedback. You know, my comments were simply based on the fact that we have had plenty of public input times on this project. And this time as well is also an opportunity for the public to give input. Maybe we haven't received that, but that doesn't mean the opportunity wasn't there. And certainly, over the last couple of years, this project's been well-known with many public input opportunities, lots of analysis done. It is time to move forward, and I don't think we need another round of public input when we've already had significant public input in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Well, thank you. I appreciate the concerns expressed by both Counselor Richter and Counselor Davis, the fact that more public input. I did do a little bit of research on my own regarding the number of steps and the planner or senior manager, Mr. Seifi, has answered a number of those, especially regarding parking. I have a couple of small offset questions. My first question, sometimes we have either agreement or partnerships with other community, with other agencies. And I was just wondering if there would be an opportunity to also share parking with the Fort Langley National Historic Park? That's my first question, if I may through the chair to staff.
Madam Chair, may I have your permission to share my screen so we can allow council to take a look at some slides?
Yes, please.
Yeah, but don't forget to answer my question.
Yes, of course. As I'm sharing, Counselor Ferguson, I will also respond by saying, yes, absolutely. There's opportunities for, and thank you for reminding me to mention that it's always a challenge to make sure that I don't speak too much and take, you know, unexpected or unnecessary time of council. But yes, there are opportunities for sharing of parking as well with the adjacent national historic site. And then the other point I wanted to mention, which I did not at the last time I had that opportunity to speak, and that is that there was subsequent to public information meeting, there was a presentation that Counselor Long, I think, was referring to that was made by the Heritage Advisory Committee, well, actually by staff on the request of the Heritage Advisory Committee and its design review panel, heritage review panel, I think, that was overwhelmingly supportive of the design that included the partial closure of the lane and the road. So the slide that you see on the screen is the overall site plan. This is the context, the subject site. This is the overall site plan showing the consolidation or subdivision, if you will. Technically, it's a subdivision of a number of lots affected to the north of the block. And then architectural renderings that, as I said, the Heritage Advisory Committee and its design review panel fully endorsed. And the meeting, by the way, the meeting that was held, the one with the Heritage Advisory Committee, was open to the public and a number of individuals from the public also participated. And this is the elevations, I think it's along the main street. That being Mavis, and then a color aerial, I guess, rendering there. The primary access to the site is going to be provided off the northwest corner of Mavis and King. And then the underground access will be along King Street, where my cursor, I don't know if you're able to see the cursor, further along King Street to the south of the subject site. That will provide access to the underground park gate. I hope I answered Counselor Ferguson's question, Madam Chair, but I'll pass that on over to you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, you have. I just wanted to comment. And, you know, government sometimes is criticized for not moving fast enough on projects and delaying, delaying, delaying. You know, the message I get by talking to people throughout the community, including folks from Fort Langley, is that they want to, they're excited about this project and they want to get going on, especially folks from the Quantland and others. People are excited. So I think we've had enough. I appreciate comments, but I think we've had enough submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson. So for a second time, we have Counselor Richter on the list?
Yes, thank you. I am still very concerned because if we read our agenda today, right before this particular item on the agenda, it says, "Allow us for written submission opportunities only when in-person public input opportunities or public hearings are not required pursuant to provincial regulations." Now, I think we should be having another public input opportunity. And I think that because of the fact that the devils are in the details. What the people have seen, the vast majority of people in Fort Langley have seen up to this point in time is a conceptual plan. The vast majority of people don't sit on the Heritage Advisory Committee, but the vast majority of people who are resident in Fort Langley have a vested interest in what this looks like. And the five building, the five proposed variants is include changing the height of the building from twenty-nine point five feet to forty-two point eight feet. Like, do they know that? Should they know that? I think they should. And I think they should have the right to comment on it. The parking, we've already talked about, the lot coverage, it's going to cover fifty-two percent of the lot. Again, is this something that the people who live in Fort Langley know and are they in agreement with? So I'm still wanting to put forward a motion to defer this for a public input opportunity where people can come and send us information, they can come and to a council meeting and give that opportunity. So I'm still want to make that motion if there's a second or four.
Point of order, Acting Mayor Arneson, is there a motion on the floor currently? Has the recommendation been moved?
Yes. Mr. Back is saying yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Currently on my screen, I have Counselor Whitmarsh. Is that a secondary comment?
Yeah, yes, please.
Thank you.
I guess my, just my question through the staff is, what would the implications be for us if we were to defer this into a public input? How quickly could that happen and what does this mean for us in terms of deferring it? What would that, what kind of issues would that maybe create? Thank you.
Mr. Seifi, maybe you can help us understand the timeline that might occur if we did that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I guess it depends on council's direction. If council wishes to delay this by, I guess, providing another public input opportunity, the question would be, in what form and shape would council wish to see that? And I guess the timing, as far as, as I said, that the process is concerned, it is, it has been provided in the past, even though the plan has not been developed to the full extent when the first time it was presented to the public, the height, the scale, the massing of the building were certainly part of the original concept that was shared. It was just finalizing the details that took, I guess, quite some time because of this need to address the various and sometimes conflicting perspectives and points of view. But in essence, the design remains the same as it was shared previously. Having said that, again, up to council to decide how, in what form and shape the segment that was read by Counselor Richter references the fact that, given the pandemic, all input is in written format based on council direction, except for the cases when an applicant has actually applied for a committee plan amendment. In those cases, as you will see this evening, there is one application that requires or that necessitates a verbal presentation, but all other input based on the pandemic has been in written format. So as to the question of what does it mean to the process, it really depends on what council might have in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Seifi. So it's somewhat indeterminate, but those are the parameters, I guess, that we'd have to deal with. Counselor Long?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Arneson. So I just want to repeat that it seems that our discussion has been quite a bit around the referral or deferral, which is not really in order considering that motion hasn't been made yet. But it is clear with our discussions that this is a project that we really want to see moving forward. There has been an awful lot of opportunity for public input, so I'm still confused about that terminology. Well, let's defer it for public input when, in fact, there is public input opportunity. And as Mr. Seifi has pointed out, if we're going to do that with this particular application, then perhaps we're going to do that with everybody. So in other words, the rules, you know, seem to be up and down a little bit. We've done everything we're supposed to do, and there are input opportunities for everybody in the township to come by writing. And I don't have a big, long list of input objecting to this project. In fact, everyone I've spoken to is in favor of proceeding with it. So my final comments would be, I hope that we can just move forward and get this project moving, which is the intent of staff, and I think any delay would not be warranted at this point for these reasons. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Richter for final go-round.
Yeah, well, the intent of the motion that I would want to do is to have a deferral of this to the next public hearing scheduled for the township to allow for people to have public input on the parameters that are specified in this project. So that would be my motion.
Okay, thank you. So I think we should call the question on the motion? No? Oh, sorry, pardon me. We need a seconder for that motion before we call the question. Counselor Davis, are you seconding the motion? Thank you. All right, so all in favor?
So are we going to, okay, we're going to vote now on the deferral?
Well, if you, if we want to entertain some more discussion? Or are we ready to vote?
Let's vote.
Is it at the discretion of the chair? I don't want to cut off the conversation. But I don't see any other hands raised. Does anybody else wish to add anything to the conversation about deferral? No? Okay, well, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
So Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Kooz, Counselor Long, Counselor Ferguson? Opposed. Motion fails. Okay, and so back to the main motion? All in favor?
No, I have my hand up. I just want to make a statement. Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We've already had several speakers on the main motion, so it's the same motion, right?
What would be our procedure?
We had a motion and it failed. We're back to the main motion. We're allowed to talk again for another round if we want to. And I want to make a statement that it's not that I oppose having this museum, I oppose the...
A point of order, Madam Chair?
Being used here right now to get this through.
Raise on a point of order?
Yes.
Can I just say quick, I appreciate Counselor Richter, I just wanted a quick ruling from the clerk. How many times, we're allowed to speak as many times as we wish under new bylaw?
No, you're, the counselors are limited to two times on the motion. In this case, Counselor Richter has already spoken twice on the motion, so it would be at the call of the chair to go any further with this.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's important conversation, so I'll grant discretion for Counselor Richter to continue and wrap up.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just want to make it very clear from my perspective. It's not that I oppose having that museum there. We've talked a long time about having that museum there, and I support having a new museum there. My opposition is to the process that's been used here with regards to public input. There needs to be better scrutiny of the details of this particular report by the public before we vote on it. So I'm not going to vote in favor of it for that reason. Not because I don't want the museum, but because I want the right process to go with the museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see some more hands speaking. Counselor Davis?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I just, I was just wondering, in the report, I did see here from the Fort Langley Community Association that it said, "Very hard to give feedback without all the information." Was this a question to staff through you, Mayor? Acting Mayor Arneson? Was this report given to the Fort Langley Community Association with all the details here in the report that we... with all the details here in the report that we, we're looking at today? It, it, it's just their, their, uh, their letter on page forty-one, like I say, says very hard to give feedback without all the information. So I'm, I'm sensing that they maybe didn't feel that they had got all the information. Just maybe a question, did, did they get all the report that we're looking at?
Mr. Safi, maybe you can help to clarify that situation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, referral process includes, uh, in Fort Langley, making a referral of applications, all applications, regardless of who they're from and who they're made by, uh, to various, uh, stakeholders. And in this particular case includes the Fort Langley Community Association. Now, I don't know specifically what details, uh, they were looking for that maybe was not provided. But the, the full architectural drawings, uh, uh, to the extent that cyclic in those would be possible. So I would imagine to the extent that we have information currently available in terms of the, that, that the slides that were shared with council just now, those would have certainly included part of the, uh, the communication with, the Fort Langley Community Association. Uh, again, I think the invitation was extended to them to attend the, the subsequent, subsequent meeting with the Heritage Advisory Committee. In terms of what information they were looking for that was not provided, it may have been to do with the actual number of, of parking stalls, for example, being provided underground. But as you can appreciate, uh, some of those details have significant. When I say those details, I don't mean the look of the building, not form and character, but the underground parking, for example. Whether we are able to provide forty-eight or fifty or fifty-two with the cost of providing underground parking facilities. Some of those questions may not have been, uh, answered, exactly when the referral was made to the Fort Langley Committee Association because of the ongoing discussions with the architect and the constructor of the facility. And, and that's, that's what I can think of at this point, that may not have been available, uh, at the time of referral.
Thank you very much. I just, I just, I, the letter was sent on June the sixth, two, twenty twenty. All that does is just make me think why I supported, uh, why I seconded the motion is because maybe, you know, they, they felt that maybe, um, it was hard to give feedback with all, and so that's why I just, I just wanted to clarify that, just to, the, just to bring that up. Maybe it doesn't mean a lot, but that's what it obviously does to the, to the community association, or they wouldn't have put that in their letter to the township. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other speakers on the list. Nope, Wendy's, uh, our clerk is concurring that that's the case. So, um, we can now move on to the next agenda item. No?
Don't we have to vote?
We have to vote. Thank you. That's why I'm looking. I have to look over a screen and see Madam Clerk's face to go like this or go, no, like this. All right, so now I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Can I have a show of hands, please? And all opposed?
I am opposed, Richter.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we can move on to the next agenda item, actually. And thank you very much, everybody, for your input on that. It's a really important conversation. Okay, item F on the agenda, bylaws for first and second reading. F one cannabis processing, research and development. Oh, I apologize, we need to call back councillor Richter. Oh, sorry, uh, councillor Woodward into the, into the room. Wait till he's returned from wherever he is. There he is. Welcome back, yeah, councillor Woodward. Okay, so we're moving on now to item F on the agenda. The license bylaw amendment for cannabis processing, research and development, nonprofit business bylaw fifty-five seventy-three. So may I have a mover and a second, please?
So moved.
Councillor Whitmarsh, second.
Ferguson second.
I think I saw councillor Coons' hands first. On, I see that there is some, uh, discussion, so I'd like to open it up for discussion. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I have a question with regards to the table that's on page six, which shows the license type and the license fees. Now cannabis production and cannabis processing is going to have a license fee of five thousand dollars. Um, on the other hand, any cannabis research or development has very significantly lower license fees, ranging from a hundred and forty dollars to three hundred and ninety dollars. I'm not sure I get the connection as to why the fees for cannabis research and development, which is all about putting, making plants that are going to go into production so much lower than for the plants that are actually in production. So I'm thinking that the license fees for anything to do with cannabis should be set at five thousand dollars across the board.
Um, maybe we need some clarification from Mr. Safi about the nature of the fees and why they're set at the rates that they are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is actually in front of council because when, uh, council was dealing with the other aspects of cannabis production, processing, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, it was not anticipated that there could be standalone operations that would not rely or would not necessarily have an integrated approach to them in terms of the other components of, of cannabis production, processing, retail, et cetera. So what has happened so far in terms of council's direction, council's establishment of policy and, and procedures has been to do with the production of, of cannabis in the farming area. Uh, that's been one aspect. And then the other aspect has been, uh, the, the sale, the retail sale of cannabis. Now, based on the fact that there has been, as council is aware, other applications that have been endorsed by council for the processing of, of cannabis in, uh, in industrial areas of Gloucester, I recall, and, and I think one in Porcell's. There has been a decision made that, or at least identification made, uh, not a decision. There's been a, uh, identification made that we do not currently have a fee structure for standalone processing and research and development. So that's why this particular licensing, uh, fee application or bylaw amendment is in front of council with respect to, uh, operations that, that require, uh, or do not have an integrated component of, of, uh, all the various aspects of, of cannabis. So with respect to processing, uh, the five thousand dollar fee is recommended. And with respect to research and development, because it's not necessarily related to just cannabis, uh, but rather it could involve other research and development. Uh, it is based on the table that was referenced earlier on page six.
Thank you, Mr. Safi. Um, I see councillor David Davis. His hand raised.
Yes, this is, um, this is, uh, to authorize staff to schedule a required public input opportunity. So, uh, to ensure the, um, position of appropriate fees and necessary related businesses operation. So thi- this is an, this is, this, to me, if I support this, this is moving this along to a public input opportunity. Just, that's correct, isn't it? Uh, that's, it in a nutshell, so to speak.
Mr. Safi?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Long?
Thank you. Um, question then, so this is, these fees are more or less industrial or behind the scene kind of uh, a- aspect of, of cannabis. Just out of curiosity, what is a fee then for a retail, uh, sales center for cannabis? These are the ones that we're going to be entertaining over the next several months. Can I get that, that information, Madam Chair?
Mr. Safi?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. That's also five thousand dollars.
And this is consistent, the, the licensing type for production and processing is consistent with the other ones. And then the new categories of, uh, research and development, uh, are being considered separately. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councillor Coons?
Thank you. Um, through, uh, your worship to Mr. Backen, if you could explain, um, the, the nonprofit business aspect to this. Um, it's just not something I really thought of before, the, that there would be companies, uh, nonprofits. So I just want a little more information about that.
Mr. Backen, thank you. vaguely.
We'll, we'll try to speak more directly. Uh, the not-for-profits act, there is something new to us. We are trying to make provisions for ensuring not-for-profits are truly not-for-profits because as such, their, their fee charge is a bit lower. We are very acutely aware, though, that some parties may form a not-for-profit and have a significant management contract that would, uh, duplicate that. Uh, so far, uh, we are content to address the set forth here, which is differential fee and being vigilant in the, uh, the event process.
Thank you, Mr. Backen. Uh, councillor Richter for a second time?
Yeah, um, well, I just want to go back to what Mr. Safi said. I recall that, um, the Gloucester establishment, for example, they were actually producing little tiny baby plants that were going to be sent out to be planted in the greenhouses and then grow in the greenhouses. So they are in fact producing, they're, they're part of the production process. So I'm actually thinking there should be two separate tables here. Uh, I, I think the license for industrial remains at the, the specified rates there. But I think cannabis research and development should be pulled out into a separate table, and it should be five thousand dollars, just like the rest of them. So I'm not going to be supporting this particular bylaw amendment on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further, oh, councillor Long, can you put your hand up? Are you wanting to speak? Thank you.
Yes, please, because now this begs a new question. I mean, um, this particular plant, uh, plant X, which I'm not familiar of the name of it, that are producing little seedlings, surely that would be production and processing with, or would that qualify under R and D? Maybe, so for example, wouldn't they be paying the five thousand already?
Could you clarify, please, Mr. Safi, the difference between those, those two cannabis products?
Yes, that, that, that particular, uh, facility, it would be categorized as both research and development as well as pro- processing.
They'd be paying the five grand and, or more?
Uh, more, because the, uh, the other fee would apply as well.
Thank you.
Okay, that helps to clarify. Thank you very much. I see no further hands, therefore no further discussion.
Councillor Ferguson, I got my hand up. I had it up at least.
Oh, you did? Okay, well, that's all right. Proceed.
Okay, thank you. I, I think there's a little bit of a confusion here. I think the councillor Long helped out. Now, if we have a motion or somebody decides to, to change or make a, uh, the five thousand for the people that are manufacturing or, or, or whatever the right word, extracting, uh, will they or will they not be paying a five thousand or more? I know, I just needed another, uh, a duplicate, uh, clarification on that through staff.
Mr. Safi?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. If I understand the question correctly is whether an operation that would have a research and development portion, component, as well as a processing component, would they pay five thousand or five thousand plus? And the response is five thousand plus.
Okay, that helps to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? All right, proceed to the vote with no further discussion. All in favor? Raise your hands?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Opposed, Richter.
Councillor Richter is opposed. Thank you, and it carries. All right, the next agenda item, number two, is rezoning application. Bylaw number one zero zero six one three, Janda Holdings, Inc. Can I have a mover and a second, please?
I'll move.
Councillor Long and councillor Davis, thank you. Any discussion? Looking for hands, looking for voices, no discussion? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I will then call the question on F two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Sorry, just one second. I can't hear anything with these on.
We'll call recess.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um, can I raise a point of order before we go to recess, please, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I've been receiving some texts and emails from people who can hear the video, but, or they can hear the audios, uh, but it's breaking up, but they can't see the video. Is there any way we can get video up and running, uh, during the recess for those viewing at home?
Okay, thank you for the question. I believe there's, there's a response.
Good afternoon. Um, we are aware that there is a problem with video. We're currently contacting the vendor that supplies the, uh, council web stream to explain to them that they need to get it fixed, but we have not got a solution at this moment. Um, I was unaware that video, the audio was not, um, as good as we thought it was, but I will definitely let the team know and they will try to expedite a repair.
Yes, the audio is, is breaking up. And, um, uh, this again goes back to a question that I've raised in the past about maybe Granicus' time is done and we need to find a new operating system here. Thanks.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you very much. Okay, well, we're going to call a recess, five minutes?
Yeah, and, you know, this, you're hearing, this material's been seen on H two, so maybe take ten minutes. Call recess, transition to meeting, maybe some of the material.
Okay. All right, so I'll call a recess for about ten minutes approximately, and, uh, we will reconvene. At two P M. then, Madam Chair?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can't hear anything with these.
I'm here. You're there.
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear now.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, trustee can hear me. And I apologize for being late with a conflicting meeting. So, so on the transact, so, uh, we, uh, we convene in the meeting. And, uh, we'll go to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H one is development permit, or sorry, rezoning application number one zero zero six zero one. Development permit application number one zero one one five one. Bylaw five six two eight, and City Development Corporation. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Councillor Davis moves it. Is there a second?
Ferguson second.
Councillor Ferguson seconds it. Is there any discussion? I see no hands, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries unanimously. We now move on to H two, and this is rezoning application number one zero zero five seven nine. Development permit application number one zero one 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 three. Uh, bylaw number five six one two, Publical Yorkshire Centre Incorporated. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Whitmarsh moves it, and the second, councillor Long seconds. And any discussion? Uh, councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, let you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have a couple of referrals on this. I don't know if you want to exhaust this session first. It doesn't, maybe doesn't look like there's much, but, uh, just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go to councillor Whitmarsh, and then I'll go back to councillor Woodward. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Um, yeah, this is, um, uh, coming forward for a third reading. And, uh, I know that this is a, um, a project that, uh, we've talked about a number of times. Um, I'm aware of, uh, uh, community, uh, input that we I'm aware of community input that we've received. We've had some written submissions that have both been in, I think there's two of them that I can recollect that are in favor. The proponent itself has done some looking at the community and surveying those in the community in the area. Those that live immediately adjacent with overwhelming strong support for the project. I'm also aware of Counselor Woodward and his poll that he's conducted himself, which has got some opposition to it. So I'm aware of all that information and feedback. This project does meet the community plan. In fact, when it first came to council, it met the community plan, but we decided that we would send it back to consider having a second floor added with some multi-use activity. It's done that. It came back with a secondary, a second floor that was added to the project. Added a daycare, which is of significant need in our community. Certainly, in our last, I think it was the last council meeting of the summer, we had a report about needs for daycare space that certainly fulfills that. There's a strong interest and encouragement to have that in that location by the people that live in the area. And so because it fits the community plan, and the developer did respond to council's request to consider enhancing the project through a second floor, because of those things, I am supportive of this project and would encourage the rest of council to move this project forward and as it should be, based on our community plan and based on the feedback that we've received from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Counsel Davis?
Yes, thank you, and welcome back, Mayor Fros. What concerns me is we're picking on this one development. It is one of the last ones, developer, developer is not asking to upzone anything. It fits with the current, I repeat, current neighborhood plans, the Willoughby Plan, the Yorkson Plan. We, as mentioned, Counsel Wismarsh mentioned it. We, they made it with, we got, it was sent back. We changed a few things. I suggest, going forward, we need to revisit our neighborhood plans before a lot of time and money is spent because it can start a lot of conflict of interest. When you get this far, and we don't like the development, whether it's, whether you don't like it because it's not financially aggressive enough for you, or financially not aggressive enough for you. So I'm going to move this along today, vote for it on those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kuntz. Oh, sorry, Counsel Richter, you're next.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back. Good to see you again. I just wanted to say that while I appreciate and very much support the idea of having childcare opportunities on this site, I think that there's been a trade-off here of some sort, and reduced parking is one of them. But also the actual zoning and what kind of property will be allowed to be built there in the future, and will that property go through a public hearing at that point in time? So these are just some questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kuntz?
Yeah, I have been watching online and seeing some of the comments. We recently got the 150 petition, which I really appreciated today because it really helped me see that there are people who are, you know, in support of this. People have said, you know, they don't want more density up there. They're glad that the proponent will be upgrading the intersection. They need more stores and services. They are absolutely in support of the daycare option. And this, you know, for us, for me, this was in the community plan. And I think Counselor Davis touched on that. You know, the developer possibly, I don't know when he bought this property, maybe it was before I got on council, maybe it was 10 years ago, so now they put this together, they follow the rules, and then I come along and tell them today that, you know, actually, I don't really, I don't really think we need to follow the rules anymore when we were the ones who put the rules in place. So that's where I'm kind of coming from. It's not that I want to, you know, discuss the merits of, you know, mixed use and strip malls, which I think is, you know, something that we've been talking a lot about. It's that maybe we should have talked about that 10 years ago, so that the developer would have, you know, something to go from. So I will be supporting it today, and, you know, those are my comments.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome back from your summary vacation, and I hope you and all members of council had a very good summer and enjoyable summer. I did want to say, this has been a very interesting process. Even many of us with experience see this as change the way we do things, and especially getting information and submissions electronically and under the COVID era. But I did want to say that there's always, over the years, been a group or individuals, including myself, that always challenged governments or challenged decisions made by folks over the years. You know, I was born in Vancouver, and we moved to Richmond, we saw a lot of changes. We always questioned those changes, but we are where we are today. And as far as this application, the childcare, the following the zoning requirements, following the official community plan neighborhood, we can always challenge that. But I don't want, I like to use examples. And one example is our municipal hall. Our municipal core was originally in an area called Marieville. We, as a council, decided that there's an opportunity to move our municipal hall to a building here, right here in, well, it would be the Willoughby area. And so this is where we are today, and it took a decision to make that. And I think we're ahead of the times for doing that. We're ahead of the times of what we did with McLeod Athletic Park and with the also Walnut Grove Pool and other things, which we, as a council, have made decision over the years, including something called the Langley Event Center, and we made a decision on that. So we make decisions, and this council, this community, has consistently made decisions that are beneficial to everyone, from cradles to grade, a beige, regardless of your creed or color. So I think that this particular application does follow suit with a planning initiative that was put into place perhaps just 10 years ago or so, not many, many more years past that. It went through the public process, it went through the planning process. Can we improve that in future? Yes. But I think that this application has done everything, including the childcare, and I'm prepared to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor. So the motion that's been moved in second and so forth, did that include the development permit? Or were you going to do that? I can't remember exactly because I was distracted when you were reading that out.
I know, it's third reading, so I included the development permit as.
I'd like to move division of the rezoning versus the development permit.
Certainly, is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
I have specific rationale for that.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll just call the question on division. I think we don't probably divide. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Everyone's, Counsel Long opposed to division, okay. But it carries, so we will start with the zoning application. Sorry, I'm going to ask the clerk which we should start with, because one follows the bylaw, or the bylaw first. So we'll go to the bylaw, 5612, and we'll vote on that. We've had discussions from several, but if anybody wishes to carry on that, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, no, so I just want to be very specific with what I'm going to be proposing here. I would like to refer back the rezoning application along with the development permit, because of course you're not going to be considering development permit if the rezoning's been referred back. But it doesn't look like it's, doesn't sound like this referral is going to be successful. But I would like to move referral back to staff to work with the proponent to propose an alternative development consistent with the mixed-use designation within the Yorkson Community Plan.
I'll second that.
Move by Counsel Woodward, second by Counsel Richter.
I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem like I need to speak to that, so.
Just want to check with the clerk. So it's been divided, but Counsel Woodward, I believe, is referring both. Two motions. Okay, so we're dealing with the bylaw, 5612, so the referral is on the bylaw. So we'll deal with that one first, and so Counsel Woodward, is it yours to speak to that?
No, it doesn't seem like there's any need to. Thanks.
I'll call the question on referral on the bylaw, 5612. All those in favor?
Point of order.
Point of order, Counsel Long?
Can you please explain once again? I might have missed the issue.
H2 has been divided, a development permit as one vote, and rezoning, sorry, bylaw as another vote. So right now, we're on the bylaw, and the motion before council is a referral back to staff on the bylaw to work with the proponent. So right now, the vote is on the referral, so I'm calling a question on those in favor of the referral. All those in favor?
Oh, before you take the vote, I think I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I guess my hand is up, and I should have been quicker to put it. I just wanted, if I could, clarification from Counsel Woodward as to what that would look like. From what I understand, I'm reading my notes, we've done that once already. That's what I remember. If I may, through the chair, to Counsel Woodward, what he would suggest the applicant do?
Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, so I can clarify that, so the intent of the referral is to be more specific. So the last time when we did that at first and second, the referral motion was much more general, to make it sort of mixed use. I specified more clearly to make it mixed use within the existing mixed-use designation of the Yorkson Community Plan, so it's a different motion for a different objective. And so it's more specific, you know, not allowing the, you know, sort of the idea that residential is added to make that more clear, so that, you know, we don't just add one little bit on one building and then call it a mixed-use project, which of course it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Clear hands up, so I'm going to call the question on the referral on the bylaw. All those in favor referring? Opposed? Counsel Long? Mayor Fros, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz, Counsel Davis opposed. The referral on the bylaw fails. And so now we're back to the main motion on the bylaw. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Counsel Woodward? Go ahead.
Yeah, there we go there. Just have another referral, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to refer the rezoning application back to staff to prepare a comprehensive development zone to match the proposed development permit, removing permission for hotels and refund container return centers from the permitted uses.
I will second that.
Standby, I got some, I'm confused, I thought we did the bylaw. Ms. Bauer, the first referral was on the bylaw. And as I understand, Counsel Woodward is asking to refer the bylaw, but for a different purpose. Is that correct?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, so the move by Counsel Woodward, second by Counsel Richter. And so any discussion? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, maybe, if you and mine, maybe have Counsel Woodward explain just a bit more what the intent of this would be. It went fast for me, so I just wanted to sort of understand what he's referring to.
Maybe we can start. Ms. Bauer, can you read the referral motion back to make sure it's consistent with what I have in my notes?
Actually, I would request that you repeat it just to make sure I've got it clear. As I understand it, you're removing hotels and recycle centers from the rezoning, but I didn't catch the rest.
Okay, so I'll read it again. I appreciate the clarification. Counsel Whitmarsh says, "Refer back to staff to prepare a comprehensive development zone to match the proposed development permit, removing permission for hotels and refund container return centers from the permitted commercial uses." So right now, let's speak to that. I'll use up one of my chances to speak to this then. Right now, the development permit is consistent. As I understand it, maybe staff can clarify if I make a mistake, can always clarify directly with staff. This is being rezoned to commercial zone number two, which also includes roughly 30 units per acre, which are not proposed on the site. It also allows for hotel uses and refund container centers, which council could in the future not prevent. They would be consistent with any future development permit application. I don't believe a hotel should go there. I don't believe a refund recycling depot should go there. So I would like this rezoning application to be made consistent with what's actually proposed, not a general C2 zone. That's what I'm attempting.
Thank you. Mr. Safi, can you shed some light on this? It seems, I haven't seen this before. I know we have zones that do cover a wide variety of uses, but at this stage, I don't quite understand. Perhaps you could shed some light on it from staff, please.
Thank you, your worship. I will attempt, and I appreciate the clarification that was provided. My understanding, your worship, and I stand to be corrected by Counsel Woodward, the mover, my understanding is that because of the fact that our C2 zone, which is what the applicant has applied for, provides for a range of uses, as is customary or is based on the format of the zoning bylaw, there's a range of uses that are permitted in the C2 zone. Rather than providing that C2 zoning, notwithstanding the fact that currently, the current application does not include certain potential future uses, the intent, if this was to be passed, would be to restrict or rather to have a comprehensive development zone that would then eliminate certain uses that are currently permitted in the C2 zone, but not forming part of the current application.
Thank you for that. So just to be clear, this is referring back to staff, but council would have the discretion at this point to make amendment to the zone to exclude hotels and recycling depots.
Can I clarify that, Mr. Mayor?
I'm just asking, Mr. Safi, if that's an option for the clerk.
The residential is also an issue there.
Okay, so the question is, you know, higher policy is, can council make an amendment to the zone to eliminate certain uses at this point rather than a referral?
I would also clarify, if I may, that right now, the rezoning includes C2, which is 30 units per acre. So there's much talk about, from this so-called petition from the proponent, that, you know, there's one of the benefits is the density is not going to end up on this site, but the rezoning application would permit future density, which council could not undo if it is rezoned to C2. So here we are, rezoning it to a strip mall with the benefit of no density. Well, in fact, you're approving density within the rezoning, so I'd like that rectified.
So just to be clear, so that was part of this referral, was to remove the density also. Is that correct?
No, I would like it consistent with what's being applied for, so potentially, maybe the application changes. So I would not be restricting density.
Okay, so then the question is, can this be handled by an amendment if we want to remove hotels and follow recycling depots from this particular parcel? That's a question for staff.
It's not consistent with the motion that I've had on the table, so let's just vote it down and move on, please.
Counsel Woodward, I just asked a question. I've allowed you to ask your questions. If you would just allow me to get an answer from staff, because there are multiple ways of doing things. Some of the mayor need to chair this meeting, make sure that, you know, we give some options to council. Referring it is one option, the question I'm asking, I haven't answered it. If that was the desire of council, we just do it as an amendment right now. Mr. Backen?
I believe that's correct, your worship. Mr. Safi, perhaps you can elaborate on the implications? If we were to delete the hotels and recycle centers, we'll leave it at that for the moment. Does that cause any undue complication from your perspective?
It does not, your worship. Thank you for the opportunity. It does not create any complications because it would be, I guess, analogous to a comprehensive development zone, which is, I believe, the intent of Counsel Woodward in eliminating or removing certain potential future possible uses that are permitted in the C2 zone. But if council wishes to remove them, it would not be an automatic entitlement that a future owner or the current owner may be entitled to. So it would not create any complications as far as staff is concerned.
So on the referral, here now, this is Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you. I'm getting all sorts of confusion here. So basically, I think most counselors, we don't want beside a daycare center or a child daycare center. We don't want a recycling plant. I don't think it says that in the bylaw that we're voting on. Uh, I don't think it says that in the bylaw that we're voting on. So and I don't see a hotel there now. Uh, is 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 the motion to what if, or is it to include our whole C two um, zoning? Um, I'm just a little bit of confusion there. The whole C two or just this one applica- this this just one site, if I may through the chair?
As I understand, it is um, a referral back to staff come back with removal of hotels and all reports. And that's what the referral is for.
That's correct, your worship.
Just point of information again. Oh, Mr. Beckham, sorry. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know about anybody else, but I I'm hearing you, but not that well. Just so you're aware.
Thank you.
It was tucked in your collar.
Thank you, your worship. We'll try it. This way it might be easier to hear. Uh, I think the purpose of the referral, as was referenced, was to delete those two possible uses being hotels and as well recycle centers. Uh, we'll leave the issue of density to a later discussion. Uh, the question answered by Mr. Seffy was that it would be permissible, uh, because effectively it would make it like a CD zone. Uh, the challenge we face in this application, and I can understand now the need for greater certainty, is that the move to the commercial C two zone, uh, while allowing those uses could in theory uh, allow them for a future user. Council has the ability to somewhat control those uses uh, through the DP process, but of course, DPs are limited to form, character and sighting. So if there was to be some additional uses beyond what was contemplated in the application, uh, they have to go through the DP process, which again does not regulate uh, uses. It regulates form, character and sighting. So as such, the the concept then of actually eliminating uses from the C two designation and effectively making it a CD zone uh, is something that does work as much as Seffy indicated because provides greater comfort to the council as to the uses that are being permitted.
Well, if I may through a chair to Mr. Beckham, would it make more more sense or just um, a, uh, what do they call those? An addition to the development purpose, permit process or third reading process that no uh, no recycling and no hotel be allowed on site rather than a a deferral?
Your worship, it could be done either way. Uh, if council is comfortable simply by making an amending motion to delete those two uses, Mr. Seffy has indicated that would be acceptable. So uh, from from the point of view of the process we've undertaken to date. So it could be done either way. It can be referred or it can be dealt with now.
I prefer, Mr. Mayor, I prefer if to make an amendment to to change the wording.
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor? That that would, I would consider. I would consider amendments to be inconsistent with the motion. So maybe.
But we haven't, I haven't allowed it. So perhaps you could allow me to chair the meeting. Uh, Counsel Ferguson, if you wish to make an amendment, we need to uh, dispose of the passer. Yeah, thank you. Okay, Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Um, this is getting a little bit murky here, so I'm trying to follow along. I did have a question through your worship, maybe to Mr. Beckham. I'm wondering um, just the degree to which if we decide that we wanted to tailor by prohibiting certain uses on this property. So if we encumber the property that way, does that mean that any subsequent owner would be restricted, save them applying for an amendment to the zoning? Because couldn't that happen as a result if if circumstances changed in twenty years and suddenly it was deemed to be desirable to have a hotel there for some reason? Um, you know, couldn't it be the case that the subsequent owner, if there was one, could apply for that or even the current owner?
If council was entertaining a motion to amend this zoning at this point, any future proponent could come and ask for amendment or to the zoning to allow for a hotel or whatever else they want. We'll get to that, counsel. On Mr. Beckham, maybe you can stand on that.
Thank you, worship. The future to answer the question to Counselor Arneson, then if these uses were deleted, then a future proponent that wished to undertake those uses would have to go through a further rezoning process. So it would have to be triggered again. Effectively, a new application with those uses to be permitted.
Thank you.
You, Counsel Wong?
Hey, your worship, you know, I I object to this whole process that is occurring at the council table now because it's to come up with these kinds of amendments on the fly is extremely um, in my opinion, out of order. And I don't know why we would be trying to now predict the future whether or not a recycling center, which is probably a very uh, good thing to have somewhere in the township. I don't know what the counselor is is thinking in terms of what might be happening somewhere down the line or even a hotel. Um, and and again, I I would say that this is a case here where we have existing zoning or existing uh, OCP and there is an application that is consistent with that. But by muddling it up now here, we'll have to figure out how that will have to play against all other applications within the township. That hotels are not allowed here or recycling centers are not allowed there sometime in the future, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, ten years. To me, I really think that it's quite clear that there's uh, an attempt here to muddle up the process. We have an application before us. There is a plan. There are no uh, uh, indications in the plan that I've seen, and maybe staff can clarify that these uses are being contemplated. And if they were, uh, at some point, that's the way it is. Uh, that's the zoning that uh, that is being applied for. And I think in all fairness, we need to proceed on that. And I would really uh, appreciate that we didn't go down these funny murky alleys here that are really, I think, intended just to upset the process, in my opinion. Thank you, your worship.
However, um, just any member of council to make a referral motion or amendment motion. And um, it's up to us to debate it in favor or not, in favor by way of a vote. Um, Counselor Richter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm just looking for some clarification here. And uh, so if this motion is voted down, could we come back with a motion as you suggested that we just simply amend the C two zone here to exclude hotels and uh, recycle centers?
Yes, that's my understanding.
That's your understanding. Okay. The second thing is, so if this zoning goes through and say ten, maybe twenty years from now, they decide the strip mall is not making enough money. Um, they could just simply rip the strip mall down and put up a hotel or thirty units per acre of housing, and there would be no public consultation on that?
Uh, the zoning would be in place. Um, there would be a developer permit application, which would look at the zoning. Not motivated at that point.
So in the development permit, the only thing that they would have uh, comments about is form and character like colors and citing and and that sort of thing. So for example, the church that's to the north of there or the temple that's to the north would have no say now in terms of whether or not they wanted thirty per unit uh, an acre housing. I have a question to uh, Ms. or to Counselor Woodward. Why are you exempting the thirty unit per acre housing? Why wouldn't you include that as along with the hotel and the recycle centers to be removed at this time?
Counselor Woodward is the next speaker, so I'm sure you can incorporate what he's about to say. Uh, do you have any other questions, Counselor? Or do you prefer to go to Counselor Woodward?
Uh, no, but I I think as long as council understands that what we're passing here today means that this um, zoning i- is not coming back, that they've got a pretty wide range of things that they could put on this property going forward. And the council of the day in the future years is not going to have a whole lot of say on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Listen, Counsel Woodward went to the back of the list. So Counsel Woodward will speak then. Um, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, this is. Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I I think that for me, the we we have law properties all over the township that have uh, particular zonings. Uh, we would have other ones that would have uh, the C two zoning uh, across the township, which means that, you know, those properties are all under the the possibility that I guess someone could build a hotel on any of those. And I'm not sure why we're um, suggest, why we're targeting this one property. Um, should we be looking at every single property in the township and and deciding which things we're going to allow and which things we won't allow five, ten, fifteen, twenty years out and make some kind of assessment of that? Um, it feels like this part property continues to be targeted. Uh, I'm not sure why. Um, they're following all the rules, uh, even going beyond what we at, what we, the rules in order to accommodate some requests of council. So I I don't see the need for it at this time. Um, that that we have a proposal that is to build a a commercial building with a daycare. They're not proposing a hotel. They're not proposing for so somehow we're speculating that in in that they might change their mind or in fifty years, as some counselors suggested how long the commercial building will last, then in fifty years, we might have a hotel there. Well, uh, I guess that might be the case. Uh, none of us will be around then to see it in fifty years. Um, but we might need a hotel there in fifty years. Who knows?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Seffy, yes, you have some comments from staff?
Uh, yes, thank you, your worship. I've I've heard, uh, I guess, comments a couple of times now with regard to uh, density for residential uses. I just wanted to, I guess, clarify for council uh, that the residential use is required because this is a commercial zone that's been applied for. The C two zone that's been applied for is a commercial use. But there's been reference made to residential up to thirty units per acre. Yes, there is a provision in the zone, the C two zone, that references thirty units per acre. But there is a, I guess, a uh, a higher level provision that says residential uses must be accessory to the commercial. Uh, so that is the predominant part. It must be accessory to a commercial use. And then it goes on to say it can go as high as thirty units per acre. So if there is a commercial use that meets all the other provisions, then the residential can, in theory, go up to thirty units per acre. Just wanted to clarify that because I think there was reference made to residential a couple of times. I thought it was necessary to provide that clarification, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Davis?
Thank you very much. I I'm I'm trying to take notes here. What I'm concerned about is um, I won't use that language to confuse or muddle up. But to the question of removing hotels and bottle depot. I I just, could I ask a question through uh, um, through you, Mayor, to Eric, uh, Mayor Fros, to Eric, uh, to Counselor Woodward? Why just those two? Um, maybe that's a question. I have a comment.
Counselor Woodward, speaking next, so.
Oh, okay.
If you have a question, then he can ask.
Okay, okay. Maybe I'll carry on then if he's speaking next. But um, I'm just wondering why we're putting those two things on. Um, the the counts, uh, as Counselor Blair, uh, Mr. Counselor Whitmarsh had said, we have a lot of properties and there's a lot of properties probably in Willoughby that could eventually um, uh, put a hotel on. It's not like we're leaving this piece wide open and this piece is old ear. We've got a real loophole. I don't see that. Um, in fact, the proponent was sticking to the to the to the plan or the or all three plans to put what he wants there. Um, Mr. Beckham had said, and I just want to clarify if I understood him right, that if this votes down, it can come back. We can uh, we can apply to have, uh, apply to have it um, come back and go ahead. But I'm just wondering, like, what other things could we do? And I'm not trying to be cheeky, but maybe we should say we can't put a dairy farm there someday. You know, I know that that's a bad example, but I'm just saying that I just wondering why I can't see where the hotels and the bottle depots come from. They're not, they they weren't even mentioned. I didn't see them in this. So I I I'm just maybe they're a question. Thank you.
Just to clarify, council does have the ability to make amendments if they wish. So that's that's another option.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Woodward, you're next.
All right, thanks. So I just wanted to um, to clarify. I think that, you know, a bit of a learning process here. I always learn something every council meeting. And here, I think that I missed the word including before removing. So the idea was to get a a comprehensive development zone uh, consistent with what's being applied for. Um, which is not what's happening here. There's a, there's a development permit consistent with a much wider selection of uses and density within the C two zone. So um, a dairy farm is not a permitted use of the C two zone. So a hotel is, um, as is uh, thirty units per acre roughly. So I receive a petition, which then, you know, on the merits, and Counselor mentioned this, a lot of people are happy, including the adjacent assembly use in terms of the church. Uh, that there will not be uh, density, residential height and density on this site. Uh, meanwhile, you're approving height and density on the site, including a hotel and and thirty units per acre. So I find this position to be very puzzling, very inconsistent. Uh, maybe some don't understand what they're approving. So I would like to rectify that and have it sent back to be consistent with what's actually being applied for. Um, and hopefully satisfying the intent of what that petition wants. Thank you.
Counsel Ferguson?
Uh, I think the thing, the confusion here is is the word refer or defer. Uh, as counselor, as some members of council have already said, it basically only to add the exclusion of hotels, the thirty units and the recycling. And that would mean if somebody wanted to put a hotel in the future, they would just have to come back for rezoning, which is a is a straightforward process. So it kind of protects the site, I guess. So that's the only word I don't like defer. The correct word would probably exclude and move ahead with the with the actual motion at large. But that that I can't accept the defer. But I can certainly, as as others have said, um, exclusion. Thank you.
Counselor Wong?
Well, the motion isn't defer, it's to refer, from what I understand. And uh, you know, the rationale that was just given by the by a counselor here is trying to respond to a petition. Uh, I'm not sure if that's the way that I would govern. I would look at everybody's petition and see what they're trying to say in that petition, supporting the project or not supporting the project. Uh, he has his petitions out there as well. And I guess this is really just some kind of a game back and forth, manipulating the public to some extent. The the project is uh, is uh, in my opinion, consistent with what we have. We should move forward with it. And your worship, you should recognize that this is really a ploy to mess this process up. It really is. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call a signal discussion. I'm going to call a question on the referral. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, opposed. Counsel Wong, Mayor Fros, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Coons, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Davis opposed. The referral failed. So we're still on bylaw five, six, one, two. And uh, Counsel Richter on the bylaw. So your hand up?
Yes. Excuse me.
Counsel Richter, go ahead.
I would like to move a motion that we exclude from the T, the C two zoning, thirty units per acre accessory um, residential development, a hotel and recycle centers. I would make that motion.
You're seconded?
I'm sorry.
Counsel Woodward seconds it. So on the amendment on the bylaw discussion, uh, Counsel Richter, you have the floor?
Uh, yes. I'm 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 really quite concerned that uh, the people who live around that area don't understand that a zoning could go forward. It it's not a zoning. I mean, they could basically tear down the strip mall and put in um, a very substantive, and not that I object to having a substantive mixed use um, on that property. Uh, but thirty units per acre in addition to the commercial uses. I don't think they understand that that's what's happening here, and I think they should have the opportunity to understand that. The same thing with the hotel and as well as a as a recycling center. So I'm agreeing with the process that you suggested, Mr. Mayor, that uh, we simply uh, eliminate those uses right now, which would require the property owner uh, at some future point in the uh, when he or they decide that they don't want a single or a two-story strip mall anymore, that they want to replace it with more density, that they they go to the public then uh, in a proper manner to get that increased uh, use and density.
All right, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Um, oh, yeah, I just um, wanted to confirm, I guess, and maybe I maybe I've already heard it, but confirm that i- if we were to do this, um, then if if for some reason, um, because I I I think we're going to have a a a commercial project going there, which is probably going to last, you know, forty to fifty years, um, or maybe less, who knows? Um, but if somewhere down the line, someone decides they'd like to put a hotel there and we've done this, they could come back to council and make a request to council to allow. and make a request to council to allow the hotel, and it would be a decision of council if we were to move in this path, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
Again, this is more along the line that was being discussed earlier on. I mean, the real, the opportunity would be for the public to have a second chance to look at it in the future, if that would be. And and I I see this exclusion is is something that won't affect the application at hand. And my question through the chair to staff would be, does this impact whatsoever the application from Polico, if I may?
Your worship, did you want me to comment?
Yes.
Yes, the question is, would this amendment impact the application as before today in any way?
As I understand, your worship, the the motion that's being contemplated by council at this point is to eliminate from the C two zone the following uses: hotels, refund container return centers, as well as accessory residential uses. And that amendment, should it pass by council, would not impact the current proposal by Polico because the proposed development consists of no hotel, no refund container, and no access accessory residential.
I just have a point of order, Ms. Ferguson.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Saffey, for that. You have a point of order?
Yeah, can I, because I don't recall councillor Richter mentioning those two commercial units. I only recall her mentioning the residential density.
I she, I recall her mentioning all three.
Did she? Okay, can I have the motion read back, please?
Sure. Once we go through the speakers list, we'll have the motion read back for everybody's advice. So next, councillor Ferguson, I think his hand is still up.
Yeah, my my hand is still up. I just, so that's a clarification. It did.
Okay.
Thank you. My hand is still up. That's a clarification that it will not affect the bylaw fifty-six twelve. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, councillor Davis?
Thank you. Okay, just, I just want to, I think that I seem to be picking on councillor Whitmarsh a lot, but he had he had asked a question. I just want to clarify one more time. In the Willoughby Centre, if they wanted to tear down something and build a hotel there, it would have to come back to council. But in the Willoughby Centre, they don't actually have a covenants or whatever on there saying that they can't ever put a hotel there. So why are we, why are we putting on this piece of property? This assembled piece of property? Why are we putting on? Why is, like, this is the third attempt to try to stop them being allowed to build a hotel there in ten or twenty or thirty years? Or in a pot bottle depot recycling? When, in fact, this could happen on any piece of corner in Willoughby? I guess that's a question. It got a little complicated. Maybe through to, I get, I think Mr. Ramit Sethi has said it a couple of times. You know what? I just want to, I just, I don't think I'm going to support it because I feel that, like I say, at any town center, they can tear down whatever they built and and they can rebuild something if they get council to agree to it. Anyhow, those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Trying to figure out, and maybe this is a statement, but I appreciate what councillor Davis has said because he said it's not a question, it's an observation. And and why are we trying to put all these restrictions on this property? And your worship, you're the chair of the Zero Waste Committee. Is there some kind of a reason that we can't have a recycling center? I mean, there isn't one proposed anyway, but I think those are darn good things to have. And a hotel, my goodness, that's nothing wrong with hotels. But I mean, these are not even being proposed. So it really is concerning to me, your worship, that we're allowing this discussion to happen based upon, I, and it was set out here, based upon a comment that was made in a survey somewhere along the line or a petition. I think we should move ahead and we should not be, you know, maybe I should make a motion, all C D, commercial C Ds own too, whatever, can't have a bottle depot and can't have a hotel, which is what we've said a few times here. Why are we picking on this one particular property? Well, I think we know the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I I actually, so this is a bit a bit conflicted on this one for me. So I actually would like to to move division. If you if council wants to proceed doing it this way, that's fine. I'd like to move division both separately on hotels and recycling depots from the density.
I picked up motion. I just want to ask, Mr. Sethi, I don't understand this as a recycling depot. If that to me, as a connotation, this is more like a a bottle return or you know, like to return it. Is that what this is? Or is this, I, so I know Metro Vancouver came along and said, do you want to put a recycling depot there? I think there may be some some changes in our zoning. But maybe you can just clarify on that, because I'm a little bit unclear.
Thank you, worship. The the current C two zoning provides for the following: refund container return center up to a maximum size of three thousand square feet.
Thank you. That's pretty small. So great. Thank you. Councillor Woodward, so I just need that clarification. So you wish to divide the residential from the hotel and and the bottle return? Is that correct? Or you want to divide each state?
I'd like, no, I don't, I don't need to do, I would propose we we, I would like to divide the restriction on commercial uses versus the removal of the residential density.
Okay, thank you. So is there a second to that?
I'll second that. For discussion. Well, I'll second it.
Yeah, I'm just going to call a quick question on that. All those in favor of division?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Frosch, councillor Ferguson, councillor Davis, councillor Long, councillor Coonst opposed. So we're going to vote on the whole thing as one.
Continue speaking to it then, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yeah, you have the party.
Okay, so that's great to clarify that the the council wants to 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 vote on all of them at once. So in that case, you know, I don't support that. I obviously support the the original intent, which I came up with, which was to remove hotel uses and refund, I mean, let me get it here quickly, refund container return centers. You know, separate from the residential density, I've been the one arguing for a mixed use project, so I will not be supporting removing the density. What I find kind of interesting is, of course, more than one member of council, which is fair, has mentioned already this this desire to proceed with this project based upon a support from adjacent landowners and residents in the area, supposedly canvassed by the developer, although I see dates missing. Interesting names. I'm not sure if that's a hundred percent kosher. There's no way to verify it in time. I'm not sure it matters. But, you know, for me, I don't find it consistent to be arguing for that aspect and saying that that's great because we don't want, the neighbors don't want it, the church doesn't want it, yet we're going to approve it within the zoning. So you can't have it both ways. And so I obviously don't support this motion in its entire form. Thank you.
Councillor Coonst?
Yeah, I find this a bit interesting because we are, you know, currently discussing a zoning that was probably put in place about twenty years ago. And now we want to do something that might, you know, possibly impact something, you know, fifty years from now. So I guess I'd just like to, you know, maybe get on with it, and I won't be supporting. I just want to, you know, carry on with what it is right now. So.
And councillor Ferguson?
Yes, I think it's important to note that this is an opportunity for the public to have a a say in the future. Any applicant can come before the staff and say, well, it was it was not at the site at the time appropriate, but we would, here's our design, here's our project, and we would like to go to public hearing on it, and maybe able to convince the council today that all three, or some of it, a hotel or housing project or something, an opportunity for the public to speak. So that's all we're doing right now. Does not change the fact that the Polico application today, and it may indeed never happen, but that won't shut the door entirely. It'll just give the public opportunity to come forward with it with a revised plan in the future for rezoning process. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Mrs. Sethi. Help clarify that. In the O C P and the M C P, was the use that we're discussing today in the zoning contemplated? And did public have the opportunity to have input during the the development of the those plans?
Yes, thank you, worship. The designation in the plan, I'm just sharing the screen with council. You see the subject site there on the corner of Eightieth Avenue and Two Forty Street. And it is designated as a neighborhood commercial center. It is the only one in the Yorkson Plan that has that designation, the only area, the only site that has that designation. And I don't recall specifically, but generally, when we do neighborhood plans, it it does take a couple of years. And I do know for sure that the Yorkson Neighborhood Plan went through a, what I would call a major upgrade, approximately ten years after its original adoption. So, give or take a couple of years, your worship, it was adopted in two thousand and then a major upgrade in two thousand and ten.
Thank you for that. So, you know, with with this, I I'm not going to be in favor of this. I believe that the public have had an opportunity and and certainly you know, we don't all, as we move into neighborhoods, know what happened ten years ago or twenty years ago, but there was an opportunity for the public and and in in this. I personally, as chair of Zero Waste, I think opportunities to return our recyclables is is important. And having those in the community where people use them, I think is important. So maybe in the future, there will be one there. And certainly, next to the Land Event Center Hotel, may be an ideal place twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years from now. And and we are, we do know that we will be running out of land. We need more spaces for residents. So in the future, that's what may happen, and I certainly would support that. So I'm going to be voting against this amendment. So I see no further hands. Someone called a question. All those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? Councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Frosch, councillor Coonst, councillor Ferguson, councillor Woodward, councillor Davis, councillor Long?
Opposed.
I was in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, councillor, sorry. Councillor Ferguson was in favor. Councillor Arneson opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so that fails. Now we're back to bylaw five, six, one, two. Very thorough discussion. Councillor Woodward?
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, no, I think that, I think we're pretty clear where where council's going with this one. So I accept my fate on this one. I think, you know, I'm just going to reiterate some of my rationale. Because I haven't spoken to the main motion yet to approve this rezoning for a local strip mall, that will allow for a local strip mall. You know, that that it may be, you know, it may fit with the community plan, but it's pretty clear that it doesn't fit with the community in twenty twenty or any sort of urban planning principle whatsoever. So I think for, you know, at some point, you got to start changing things, or things are never going to change. I don't I don't find that to be particularly controversial. You know, I think that, you know, if you're not going, if you're going to approve every development just because it's consistent with the community plan, then we don't really need a council. We can just delegate authority to staff for any rezoning and development permit application that's consistent with the community plan. We don't need to debate these at all. We can just delegate authority to staff. So I think that seems to be what some on council like. They can just sort of rubber stamp these things. And I and I think I just take a little bit of a different approach to the job that that, you know, that that we run for certain things based on certain principles and and that, you know, strip malls in twenty twenty just are are not something that should be approved. And and that's why we have these neighborhood plans, and that's why they're called plans. They're not, they're not bylaws. They're bylaws in the sense that they're planned, but they're they don't guarantee approval. They don't, they don't allow proponents to just assume that just because it's consistent that it's going to be rubber stamped. And I I don't find it controversial to be opposing a a single-story strip mall in in twenty twenty that's going to be there until, you know, decades and decades, and given the economic life of of some of these buildings. The design of this particular strip mall is especially poor. You know, it is no interface to long, large sections of the pedestrian sidewalk. There's no attempt to project an outwardness towards the community. There's no attempt to to have a significant quantity of entries off of the sidewalk. There's a significant amount of sidewalk frontage which isn't used, other than for potentially a drive-through queuing lane and and a couple of small sections and a couple of C R U's. There's eighteen C R U's, as I counted in this. I think there's five that aren't set back way from the road in front of a parking lot. So this is really something you would see on landly bypass. This isn't something that should be approved in the heart of a residential area. You know, you can't really claim to care about affordable housing, current urban design principles, or climate change mitigation, and and vote for a strip mall like this in the middle of a residential area. And and I feel pretty strongly about that. It's basically contrary to every planning principle there is. There should be no expectation on the part of a proponent to get a strip mall approved like this in a residential area in twenty twenty. We should be building and requiring people to to provide real communities, not strip malls. And and I don't find that to be particularly controversial. I think council even agreed with that earlier in the summer, until, you know, the flip flop of the of the decade kind of occurred here. And and I think it's sad that we're heading in this direction after after logging occurs. I think that we all sort of instinctively knew that this to be true. And like you said, Mr. Mayor, we are running out of land and places to put residents. And and I think that that's why we should not be approving developments like this because of exactly what you just said. And and so I would hope, and and I feel it's a pretty sad day that this is getting approved, given the way it's gone down the last few months, feel pretty strongly about it. And again, there's not much more things that I can say in regards to this moving forward. But it's it's really sad to see development like this being approved in twenty twenty. Thank you.
Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, you know, it's good to hear the comments that from councillor Woodward, while I don't agree with much of his sentiment. I think this council did do its due diligence and look at the application. It wasn't a carte blanche that you just get to do whatever you want. In fact, we did send this one back. So it was a classic example of a council being very careful and analyzing the 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 application and suggesting that we didn't approve of the way that it was submitted. And it wasn't carte blanche. We in fact did require it to go back to the developer, and we did require a second story. It is not a one-story strip mall. It is a two-story project that is multi-use, that has a daycare that provides for the community. We did, as a council, require them to do that. If we were simply looking at carte blanche, we would have just accepted it as is, but we did not. We voted, I think, if I recollect, it was seven to two, maybe even eight to one, I can't remember, but seven to two, at least where we sent it back to the developer. And it came back with new design and and a and a new idea. And it fits the community plan, but also is a two-story, multi-use facility. And the residents around the area like it, they're supportive of it, overwhelmingly supportive of it. And so to us as a council, I think we've done our due diligence. We've done the kind of things we should do. We have listened to the community. And I therefore think we should go forward.
Councillor Richter?
Well, I guess what I'm sad about is I don't for one minute believe that the people who participated in any of the open houses or sent feedback in understand what the C two zoning is all about and what it means in the future. And they were given a picture of a strip mall or a two-story with a daycare on one part of the strip mall. And that's what they liked, and that's what they think they're going to get. And yeah, they're going to get it. But the surprise is going to come down the road, whenever that is, when all of a sudden what they thought was there for perpetuity is going to disappear and be replaced without them having the opportunity to have an input into the zoning at that time. So I'm not supporting this. I think it's, the C two zoning is not exactly what the public believes they are buying into. And that, to me, is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a good discussion. And, you know, certainly varying points of view. I don't think any one, any of this is wrong. Everyone's entitled to their own opinion, whether you like this type of projects or not. I I I my opinion, and and these aren't forever. At some point down the road, somebody will come along and ask for a demolition permit, and the council will have to beat that and see what's going to come up next. So these things aren't forever. Certainly, you know, I think it's a good development. I like the daycare aspect of it. The opponent has done what council's asked. I've been supportive of it all the way along. And again, it's been good discussion. Doesn't mean, you know, any one of us are wrong. We all have an opinion. Certainly, certainly it's all valid. But with that, I'm going to call a question.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I've only spoken once to the main motion.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't see. I thought we were all done. Go ahead. Last word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, I won't belabor. I just wanted to to respond to this perception that there's a strong support. I just wanted to respond to this perception that there's a strong support for this. There, there is a document that we received today. I actually hadn't seen it until today regarding a petition of the local community that, that seems to express some support. And I wanted to highlight for, for people's attention to be following this issue closely, that, you know, the head description of that petition, petition to support the Yorkston Village Community Development regarding Yorkston Village, plan for the northeast corner. We contribute to road improvements, residents' convenient access to retail amenities with a daycare, walking distance, consistent with the neighborhood plan. Oh, this is great. I can't wait to support Yorkston Village. So I know this is, I think, a bit of pretty good fake news that there's a lot of widespread support for this. I mean, I, I think what is pretty clear is that if, if it was expressed that it's a one-story strip mall with a two acres of asphalt, that the result might have been different. So I think it's, it's clearly quite amusing to me that it's referred to as Yorkston Village. And I look forward to asking some of these residents what they think of it once it's built. Thank you.
Point, Counsel Woodward. I know in university, I studied petitions and that sort of thing and what's valid, what isn't. Certainly the slant that someone puts on it, they can be biased. And I think in this particular application, I've seen petitions with biases on both sides. So we all have to take them all with a grain of salt. And I think that's why council has to make a decision based on the relevant information and what they, what they feel is appropriate for this area. And I guess they have seen both sides on this and both are perhaps biased. And yet we still have to carry on, make a decision. So with that, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bylaw 5612 and opposed.
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed, Counsel Woodward opposed. Any others opposed on this? It carries. Now move on to development permit application number 101113 and discussion. Counsel Woodward, your hand is up. Do you wish to discuss the?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Backham, that's on the stage.
Your worship, thank you. The, the point here I was going to make was that the permit is not being voted upon today. The motion is simply that it run concurrently with the bylaw in accordance with Attachment A. The permit can't be issued until after. We've had final reading or concurrently with final reading.
I do have a point of order.
No, excuse me. Thank you for that clarification. So all we're voting now is that it runs concurrently. We're not voting on the DP. Okay, so, so with that, you know, information, I appreciate the clarification. Counsel Woodward?
Okay, so yeah, that's a good clarification even for the future because I think that's important for us to note that, that we're not actually approving the development permit at third reading. We're approving the development permit at final adoption. Is that correct, Mr. Backham?
No, that's correct. I know we always, always have to separate the motions.
I think that's a good distinction, good distinction for a new counselor like myself. So I appreciate that. The, the, so how do I be helpful here, Mr. Mayor? Because I had a referral to try to help out. So rather than, you know, maybe the proponent spending money on a design or how I, you know, that, that, that logic would be used against me at final adoption, that I would like to, to be helpful and see if council would support and direct it to the developer and staff to remove the drive-through queuing lane along 84th Avenue, which would be a citing form and character issue. Maybe Mr. Backham can assist.
Backham, I wonder if we do that at, at the development statement stage. Mr. Backham?
That's, that's correct, your worship. It could be done now or direction could be given at this point for the developer to consider making an amendment to his DP prior to final adoption to exclude that. And that way there would be, the DP could continue with the process, but the, the proponent could have meant it if they so chose.
So, so Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would make a motion to require that as a condition of approval. I don't see the point of asking them to do it. The answer is just going to be no.
I'll second that.
Motion moved by Counsel Woodward, seconded by Counsel Richter to acquire the removal of the queuing.
The drive-through queuing lane, that's right.
Drive-through queuing lane. Counsel Woodward, do you wish to speak to that?
No, I think it's self-explanatory. I'll speak to it if others do. Thank you.
Can I just have a point of order?
Counsel Davis, point of order.
What, what are we, we're, I thought Mr. Backham said that we weren't going to vote on the development permit. That would come later. So what, why are we continuing on it? On the development permit?
Mr. Backham also said that we could at this stage make the amendment or at the other, at the final stage make the amendment. So Counsel Woodward has chosen the motion at this stage. So that's, that's why.
Okay, so, but the problem is, this is new.
Counsel Woodward, Counsel Davis, you asked for a point of order, so I've answered it. There is a speaker's queue, so if you wish to speak to it, that's fine.
Thanks.
And with the screen being shared, I've lost my speaker's queue. Maybe go back to it.
I apologize, your worship. I thought I was being helpful.
No, no problem at all. Just the way that Zoom works, it takes away my queue. So I do have Counsel Arnison, Counsel Long, Counsel Whitmarsh, and then Counsel Davis. You wish to speak to it? So I'll pitch onto you. Counsel Arnison.
Yes, thank you, worship. I appreciate that this can come forward in a manner that would be efficient and potentially cost-effective if there is a consensus that we do not wish in this environment to have a drive-through. I'm kind of conflicted. I've never been in support of drive-throughs, but I do see with COVID, they've been a boon to some businesses. However, I believe that the materials that were generated indicated that it's a bad interface between the queuing and a public sidewalk, which I don't think is a good idea. So I will be supportive of removing an ability to have. I think if we're going to have a coffee shop there, there's a lot of better opportunities and more positive ones to have in a neighborhood than just a drive-through.
Counsel Long.
I like A and W.
Okay, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, is this, maybe just for clarification, is this a, a suggestion to get rid of, of, of having a drive-through at all? Or to get rid, or to change the way that people queue up for the drive-through? Maybe just clarification from Counsel Woodward.
Perhaps, yeah.
I know, Mr. Mayor, no, I believe my motion was to remove the drive-through queuing lane entirely.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh, that answer question. Counsel Davis.
Okay, this, I know, I'm just going to make a brief comment. This is new. I am not prepared to do this. I am prepared to vote on H2. And I guess I was prepared to vote on, on 5612 and the development permit. However, this is, to me, right now, this has been thrown at me. And I was, I'm not, I don't even know, I like, I, I have to look at that. We've got a motion coming up about new information. I've done this before. I don't like reading information. We, you know, we've, I've gotten information today on this, but you know, I, I can't be in the meeting and reading other stuff and trying to make decisions. So I'm not speaking for anybody else. And I can see, I think the reason Counselor Whit- Woodward's would like to deal with this right now is because I think it may be fine-tunes and cuts something off or on, or you know, I can, I can see why. But I don't, I, I don't want to vote against it, but I don't know, like I, you know, and, and right now, the way I feel, I feel like I want to vote against it simply because I don't, I haven't read up on that lane. I just looked at the whole, anyhow. So I'm, I'm, you can see, I'm, I'm, I don't want to vote. If I vote against it, it's because I haven't actually read up on that piece and I'm, and it's just being kind of thrown at me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Counsel Arnison made a good point. COVID, drive-throughs and distancing has become very important. And so I'm prepared to support this. Eighteenth Avenue is a major thoroughfare. 216th just opened and it's going to be a major connector. So these sorts of facilities are throughout the township, throughout the lower mainland. It serves a purpose. Doesn't mean it's not walkable for those that live there. So I can support this. Counsel Ferguson?
Well, yes, for that very reason. It's, it's not as if there's a greater need for more drive-throughs. I, I do frequent drive-throughs and so does my family, but that doesn't mean to say they have to be everywhere and in every application. I think that's a good idea. So I will support the fact that we can add this on and not have a drive-through. I like to drive in, park, and then go to the coffee shop too. So that makes sense. It's not going to hinder the application. It might end up, safety measures are always important, especially on main thoroughfares. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so no further discussion. Ms. Bauer, can you back the motion, please?
The motion would be to amend the development permit to require the removal of the drive-through queuing lane in its entirety.
Thank you. Now I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Opposed.
Whitmarsh, froze, Coons, Davis, Long, opposed. So I believe that fails. So I'll move on to the motion as it is. Is for this to run concurrently.
Counsel Woodward. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I've just, I've got another referral of the development permit.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to also move that, that if we're going to be retaining the drive-through, that, that we would need to do some reconfiguration. So I would like to, I'm not sure how to word it specifically to the development permit since we're not approving it, but require the proponent to work with staff to relocate the commercial buildings to the sidewalk interface with parking in behind, with as little of the parking lot exposed to pedestrian and residential views as possible.
I'll second that.
I move by Counsel Woodward, seconded by Counsel Richter. Counsel Woodward, speak to it.
No, I honestly don't see the point. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Whitmarsh, froze, Coons, Davis, Long, and Ferguson. Motion carries. Their file fails, sorry. So now we're back to the motion to have the bylaw, the development permit run concurrently with the bylaw. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward, opposed. Motion carries. All right, we move on to bylaws for final adoption. I1 is highway closure, dedication, removal, and exchange. Blaney, bylaw number 5610. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
That's moved by Counsel Arnison, second. Seconder, Counsel Davis. Discussion, Counsel Davis.
Highway closure, dedicated, removal, and exchange. Could, could I just get an opinion with Mr. Backham? I haven't, quite often you see highway closure, dedication, removal, but I don't always see the exchange. And I just, just a simple explanation for that.
I think I'll get Mrs. Seppi. It basically goes back to, it's a property with a small remnant of a road. They're changing, it's a simple exchange. There's not a lot of difference in land, but Mrs. Seppi or Mr. Backham? Mr. Backham?
That's correct, your worship. This goes to some very old subdivision documents when a different layout was planned prior to the agricultural land reserve. In this case, these alignments would not be appropriate. So as a consequence, we've actually allowed them to be closed internally and instead taken frontage on the main road, which, I can't remember the name of the main road, but I think it might, it's in the vicinity of the, Armstrong, thank you. The vicinity of Armstrong. So at the crest of the hill, we've taken additional land to allow for a future realignment. It would take a bit of a bend out of it at some point if traffic flow should want.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See no further discussion. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Done reading. There we go. All right, we're now on to correspondence. And this is a request for support for expanded patio permissions. Could I have a motion to receive?
Move, retreat, and I look forward to the report next week.
Counsel Long moves, receipt. And seconded by Counsel Davis. Discussion, Counsel Richter.
Sorry, I just have to get it turned on here. I had a question with regards to the employment numbers that are on page one of J1, where it says in there that BC's 14,000 restaurants and pubs employ over 190,000 people. Is this number still true? Because there have been a lot of restaurants closed down. There have been reduced staffing levels as a result of COVID. So I'm, I'm just wondering if staff could perhaps try to update. They may not be able to, but if there are updated figures, if we could get them when their, when their report comes next week. The other thing that I'm quite concerned about, and I'm hoping that staff will address it in their report that's going to come to us next week. On these winterized patios, I think there needs to be some sort of a covenant put in place that says that once the BC emergency orders are lifted, then any of these temporary winterized outdoor patio structures will be removed within 30 days. I think they were able to get the patio structures up and running within 30 days. So I think they can take them down within 30 days. What I'm wanting to make absolutely clear is that the owners of these establishments don't assume that they will have these expanded outdoor patios in perpetuity. And I think we need to have some sort of a covenant or something in place that makes it clear that as long as we're under an emergency COVID situation, they can have the expanded space. But once that situation is gone, and hopefully it will be within the not very distant future, that things need to go back to normal. And taking up your entire parking lot with an outdoor patio is not normal. Thank you.
I thank you. So staff will pick that and do the best they can. To the back of us. Counsel Davis.
Yes, thank you very much. I also, like, I, I, I think that it stimulates more business. It's better. I like to eat outside, you know, it's, I can hear better. I don't have to hear everybody in the room. Anyhow, I did point out when we did extend this, what happens when we, if we have to claw it back or do that? And I don't know, maybe that's when the time comes that we'll figure that out and might be a good thing or not thing. But there are situations, just like Counsel Richter said. If a parking lot is consumed, if we move on and have more permits come in, yeah, well, let's just, we don't have to have as much parking. We can have everything in the parking lot. And I can see that being a problem. But this is a, this was brought on by COVID. And I am, you know, the ramifications are what happens when we want to take the parking lots back or pieces of road or whatever it is. So that, that's going to be a problem. But other, other than that, I, like I say, I think it, it's working well for me. I, I like to see, I like to see us, as a township, sensitive, sensitive to stimulating more business and that sort of thing. But there will become a time. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question on receipt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now move on to the mayor and council report. So good evening, welcome back from seven weeks of vacationing. And I hope everyone did take some time off and enjoy time with friends and family and get that much-needed rest that I know everyone needs. Certainly believed I needed it and took advantage of it. In fact, I learned how to kayak, a kayaking course. Had a lot of fun over the summer with that. So we had a few significant events that happened over the break. And these are ones that'll benefit the entire community. On Friday, September 4th, the long-awaited 216 interchange, that's 216th Street interchange, opened, providing eastbound and westbound access to Highway 1 and pedestrian and bike access across the highway. As part of this project, Highway 1 has been widened from four to six lanes between 202 and 216th Street. And HOB ramps have been extended to and from the 202 street, making the HOB corridor continuous from Grandview Highway in Vancouver to 216th Street in Langley. And I did take the opportunity on Friday when it opened to drive over at about 6:30 in the morning and took opportunities a few times since then, and certainly a great construction. I have heard some positive, and I've heard there's been a few issues. Today I spoke with Minister Trevina, Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, and just mentioned that there might be some issues eastbound, and they've heard of those, and their staff are looking into it, so certainly on the eastbound off-ramp, and they're looking into that, but I know overall it's a great project. And not only will the new interchange reduce congestion, create shorter commute times, and move people and goods more efficiently throughout our region, the H O B lanes and improved access for walkers and cyclists will encourage people to make transportation choices that are better for the environment. This important transportation link will greatly enhance travel for residents, businesses, and visitors, and we truly appreciate the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure's commitment to this project. On Saturday, September twelfth, Councilors Whitmarsh, Davis, Arneson, Council Ferguson, myself, joined Shannon Todd Booth from the Langley Hospice Society, who are social-distanced photo op to commemorate, commemorate the start construction for this new hospice residence. Township of Lanning was pleased to contribute to this valuable project and is excited to see the new fifteen-bed hospice taking shape near the Lanning Memorial Hospital. The Township of Lanning Fire Friday's charitable society is also a great contributor to this project, and on Monday, August twenty-fourth, held a very successful golf tournament at Redwoods, Redwoods Golf Course to raise money, furnish, and outfit the hospice house. So that is my short report, and just again, welcome everyone back. I'm going to counsel the residents back to another season of council meetings and doing business here in Langley. Is there anything, Councilor, would like to add? Council, Council Ferguson?
Hello, I'm here. So yeah, you, I think you missed the fact we had this Township of Langley staff golf tournament. I know you came down, Mr. Mayor, and so did Councilor Whitmarsh, and I had an opportunity to play with the staff, and it was very well organized by the staff, and Harry and his crew, I'd like to compliment them, and we really have a good working relationship with, with the staff, so I wanted to point that out. The second thing is, even though it was summertime, I had the opportunity to meet with the staff of the Indigenous Committee working on issues regarding treaty, and also work on, work with the ongoing projects with the salt, the liquid waste committee, which I'm on, which I met with staff in proceeding with submissions for our own island and other projects that are ongoing, so. And lastly, make sure everyone recycles and make sure everybody, there's only flushes of things needed and do not flush the unflushable. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You are becoming the king of the unflushables. Council Davis?
Thank you very much. I just would like to add, two sixteenth, long-awaited, Logan and Desmond, Gavin and Charlotte were the first rubber tractor John Deere to go across in the morning to pick up silage at a dairy farm in Fort Langley and come home. And they found that it was a lot shorter drive, other than eighty-eight needs to be flattened out a little. I guess we need a bigger horsepower tractor. But now traffic does, and you mentioned this, we do have, Willoughby has now another way to go north, and we've noticed a traffic increase just in the last ten days or so. People are learning, and it's quite, quite, quite a bit of traffic coming down two sixteenth. So we're long-awaited the Glover Road and two sixteenth update for safety on the railroad tracks there. But I just, I just wanted to mention that it is, it's another way now to get across the freeway, and for whatever reason, you have. So it's, it's, I know not, it's a good thing. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Council Long?
Thanks, Your Worship. As you know, I'm not on Metro many committees, but I know that I was very much involved with Metro Parks. I'm wondering if we could get an update on Campbell Valley Regional Park Management Plan, because it's going through several phases of updating. I know there was initial phase was last fall, and I don't know if there's anything that can be updated, because the phase two of the public engagement is happening as we speak, I believe, and that will guide the, the future development of the Campbell Valley Park, which is five hundred and forty-eight hectares here in the township.
Okay. I don't know, Council Richter, you're on the parks committee. Do you have anything to add or maybe staff can?
Well, I, I would have something to add, except that our parks meeting after the summer break is actually occurring on Wednesday. So all I can say is that Councilor Long is correct, there's a second wave of input coming in. The, the staff members are working very much towards getting an updated plan in place, which will be going to the regional board. I would think probably within the next six months for approval.
So how do the public get involved? Just go to the metrovancouver.org website and?
Yeah, and there should be input opportunities there for sure. Or they could go down and visit the park and pick up a brochure. I'm sure they've got brochures down there too that they could have them put on.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the report. Move on to other business. And Council Richter, you have O one, control of nuisance animals policies?
Yes, whereas Report twenty-eighty-eight, nuisance of, Control of Nuisance Animals Policy Update was adopted unanimously by council on July thirteenth, twenty-twenty, whereas Forty-third Avenue from two seventy-second street in Aldagrove East to the Abbotsford border apparently still floods continuously from November to February each year, even though extensive mitigation works have occurred there. And whereas this prolonged annual flooding on Forty-third Avenue creates health and safety concerns for area residents, therefore, be it resolved, the council asked staff to provide a report on the mitigation efforts and costs taken to date on Forty-third Avenue from two seventy-second street east to the Abbotsford border, and whether additional efforts are needed under the Control of Nuisance Animal Policy Update in order to protect the health and safety of area residents. And if I could just speak to that very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I had the.
I'll just ask for a seconder and then.
Oh, right.
Council David seconds, okay, go ahead.
Thanks. I had the opportunity to speak with one of the area residents this past summer, and according to that resident, the water level's still with all the works, and if you drive down there, you can see that the township has done a lot of work in terms of putting barriers up and, and lights and signage and everything else. But if you're at the far end of Forty-third Avenue coming in from two seventy-second, sometimes the water is so deep there you can't get through it unless you're driving a very large pickup truck. And so that's of concern to the residents who are driving smaller vehicles, they can't get their, their vehicles through the water levels there. So the purpose of this report is really just to get an update from staff and to see if there's anything else we can now do in order to try to bring those water levels down to a more manageable level for the area residents. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Carries unanimously. Hey, Council Richter, O two?
Yes, this is about our council procedure bylaw. I won't read the whole thing because it's relatively long, but basically I was wanting to amend the council procedure bylaw in order to make sure that substantive material that comes to council arrives to council seventy-two hours prior to any vote or decision that council has to make on the matter, and if it doesn't arrive within the seventy-two hours, that there's an automatic deferral to the next council meeting to allow us time to absorb that information. So I move the motion.
Seconder, Council David seconded. Discussion. You know, I'll just, you speak to Council Richter, you're first if you wish to.
Yeah, I, I'm just finding, I know we're coping with a lot with the technologies that, that we're trying to work through here, and I think for the most part, we've done a very good job adjusting to the new normal. But it, it is concerning to me when we get either very substantive staff information or very substantive information from the public, particularly on the day of or the day before we're scheduled to make a council decision. And I think that given the volume of information sometime that's coming through, that we really need to just postpone that decision for a week to give us time to thoroughly read and and adjust or digest the material that we've received. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker's list, I'll just speak to you first. I think it's a, it's a good idea and good initiative. However, I think there's other tools that we can use, I would, in my own personal opinion, it's up to council, is that we had the ability to, and we do have the ability, when something comes to the table, we feel that we haven't had enough time to read the material, any member of council can raise, raise that, and I believe we have in the past and deferred it to give us more time. So it's more of a one-off in a blanket policy. And the other thing is, and certainly council can, any member of council can say, I'd like a few minutes to review this and call for a recess, and I'd be certainly mindful of that. It's a good idea to get more information if, if we feel that's all we need rather than deferring, rather than having an automatic deferral. But I do see the point, and I'm thinking we can still, under our current tools, still deal with this on a one-off, one-on-one time. I'll let Council, Council speak to it. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I appreciate this being brought forward by Council Richter. I, I, I would agree that it's often challenging when we receive information very late, particularly if it's a lengthy document or a lot of information coming from either public or staff or whoever. Could be information that comes from, you know, from even one of our own council members. So it is challenging for sure. The difficulty is that I think that count, that the public, on the public side, they're not aware of what the agenda might be until maybe Friday. And so that would mean that they wouldn't, they would see the agenda item and they would be unable to submit anything, unless then it would automatically push the decision a week, and there might be reason why that decision can't be pushed for the week, and so I'm, I'm totally appreciative of this. I think it is something that would be really helpful, and I'm not sure what the best tool is, maybe five or ten minutes in a council meeting is fine, but sometimes it requires more than that. It requires reading it and contemplating and thinking about it. It's not just reading the information and then having to make a decision in five or ten minutes. So, and I, I think one of the challenges might be to define what is substantive. You know, what is a substantive piece of information? Is that based on volume of pages? Is it based on what we think is significant or not? What is substantive that would actually cause a, a decision on a, on a topic to be deferred by as much as another meeting? So, so I'm very open to this, and I'm certainly open to hearing suggestions and solutions from other members of council. But I do think that there is something that we could do, or I would like to see us do something that would help to deal with this kind of information that we do get, and so that we can make good, proper decisions and not feel like we're rushing.
Thank you, Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I can appreciate these different points of view. I had a similar thought when I was reading this myself, that I think it would be fair and appropriate to try and define in some way substantive, because the volume of material is one thing, so I think that that should be a generalized principle if we're going to adopt that, but also the degree to which it's a complex issue. I mean, if I had maybe fifty pages of graphs, it wouldn't be, it may be really difficult, but as opposed to dense text, you know, so those are the some of the nuanced things that I think we would need to consider. I'm of the opinion that obviously if we are deciding on things, it has to be as an informed individual, and to inform individuals, I, I, I take your point, Your Worship, about the fact that anybody could have called to a recess so that we could look at the materials, but I personally wouldn't prefer that as a method to try and get around this, just because I think in some ways it's almost stigmatizing. There are different degrees to which people can process things, and just because myself or anybody else would require a certain timeframe, you know, maybe some people wouldn't feel that way, and some people wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable saying that they wanted more time. So I, I'm not sure what this could look like, but I do think it's something that should be explored, because in, in making decisions when information is coming very close to the point in which you've internalized and analyzed the other information, does make it more difficult, I think, to make a, a good decision about what we're, what we're deciding. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Council Davis?
Thank you. You know, this, this is, I'm glad this is here. I have issues. I was concerned when we changed public, no, I'll look at the book. Public hearings, and we were, we were able to make a decision on a public hearing the night of if we all agreed to. And generally, what's happened is if there's no new input, then we make a decision. If there's input, people want more time, then we make that decision. So that's kind of worked well. I never thought of taking a recess, but you know, we, recesses are intimidating to me. I don't want to say, oh, can I have a recess? I got to read my stuff. It's new, and you know, I, I, I can only read so fast and copy. I like sometimes to sleep on things if they're real. So I'm glad this here, I don't have any answers right now, but I do know that when I start getting things that come in, and this has happened more and more in the last six months than it has the first three or four or five years in council or the first two terms I sat on, we don't, we didn't usually get it so close, but now we're getting it more. And so I'm, I'm concerned, like I say, I, I, right now, as I'm talking, I don't have, I go to sleep on it. But I don't, I don't have any information, I don't know what I want to do about it, but I don't want to make it cumbersome, so that staff can't, like, who, who, who's the one that calls the shots for substantial? I just, I just don't like getting information the day of. I, I like to read it the day before and and you can entertain it and you can investigate it and all that sort of stuff. So somewhere along the line, I think I'd like to make a, some sort of movement in a direction where we could, could have it a little sooner, or like I say, put it on to the, so I can sleep on it. David, over and out.
Council Long?
Yeah, well, I think it's attributed to the start time, because when we used to get our packages, the, the distribution list came around noon, I think it's still coming around noon or eleven-thirty, but our meetings didn't start till three. Now our meetings are starting at one, so it's kind of a COVID-related. But I, I'm really concerned about the, the notice of motion. I mean, first of all, I didn't have enough time to to look over this really and consider all the unintended consequences that could come if this motion was passed. I think we should ask staff to help us for a solution. I don't disagree with all of council that we have a concern here. Taking a recess, I think, Your Worship, you should be leading the, the suggestion of that, so we don't feel embarrassed. I mean, if there's stuff to read, we should stop and read it. But there's all kinds of potential unintended consequences that can come from what's being proposed here. For example, a whole pile of letters can all of a sudden come up about an issue that the public may be concerned about, and the next thing you know, we can't deal with that issue, because the policy says, oh, boy, we got a bunch of letters, let's defer it to the next meeting. That could happen at the last meeting of the summer. It could happen at other times, and time sensitivity may not be, may be not considered. So, and then, of course, the word substantive is in A, B, and C, and what is substantive? As far as I'm concerned, everything that comes from the public has a potential to be substantive, so there, you know, I don't think there is a definition there. Everything's important, everything's small or large, but council does have a chance to, to at least look over the, the documents, and I think we should be allowed some time for that if we haven't had a chance to do that, and then determine whether it can be deferred or not. Because to automatically defer, that, I can see all kinds of unintended consequences occurring from that. But maybe staff could comment on this new time, when we, when we move the meetings back to one o'clock, that opened the gate for this whole situation to occur. So are there plans to, to change the meeting times? Because cutting it back, let's remember this, folks, that, that other councils actually have the agendas for several days. We've had this discussion many a time, where we only have from Thursday till Monday, plus we have to deal with all the notice of motions that are outside of our normal business and, and consider the repercussions of those. So there's a lot of work for us to do between Thursday and Monday. Now, the public don't get the agenda till Friday, so I think this motion's saying you've got like an hour to send a letter or something, but I mean, the fact is that we process things in a very timely manner, and to now put a restriction like this is going to stop any public input, I would think, especially during COVID, that is, that is encouraged in a written form. So, Your Worship, as I asked, can staff comment on, on the start times? Are we going to always start at one o'clock? If that being the case, then this is a problem that will not easily be solved, but if we move the meetings back to, say, two, well, that's an extra hour. Perhaps that'll solve it. Be interested in the comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I know our evening meetings have been come, you know, last, we're not working so late in the evening, or we started earlier, so it's, I guess, it's one half together. But Ms. Bauer, do you have any comments on that?
The current format of the meetings and the start time are actually driven due to COVID. The reason we have all meetings, all items in the afternoon is to ensure that we don't have too many people in the evening for the public hearing. As you know, when we do an evening meeting and a public hearing, we could be faced with a larger number of people than we can facilitate. So the idea was to leave as much space open for individuals to come to the public hearing to try and avoid any of those problems. As for going forward, at this point, I would, I would entertain. At this point, I would, I would entertain that we would be continuing with this method for the meetings until the COVID restrictions are limited. Or eliminated. Unless we can come up with a new creative idea.
So your worship, having heard that, it is a challenge, as has been said by council. So there's a challenge that we have to undertake. And I think we should allow some extra time if required to read them, but I don't feel very comfortable at all. About restricting the input from the public, especially since with COVID, the, the input is somewhat more limited. And I believe far more important now than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. We go to councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like the, the amount of materials and the contents are challenging. And specifically when they're referred to and happen. I also think that this notice of motion and how we vote accordingly is a challenge on its own. And I appreciate the fact that we're sitting on this day, but I, the last thing I would want to do is. Is make the wrong decision tonight on something of importance. If I may, can I ask a question through to staff? Now, if we put things forward that we receive on a day and there's time sensitive issues. That can't be addressed and we put that forward, would that put a challenge on the timeline and, and scheduling for staff? For projects or for other things, if I may?
Back.
Your worship, I think the question is if there is some submissions, say at hour seventy-one. Could that affect applications or projects or whatnot? And I suppose the answer is yes, it could. That's where the automatic nature of the motion might be troublesome. And I think I've heard from council that the, the level of discomfort is around the word substantive. Because clearly there's some matters that can simply be received and processed very quickly, but there's others that may not. And as you outlined, there's a couple of options such as a, a break or a deferral. So given all that, maybe it's appropriate then to simply refer this back to staff for some further refinement. And, and see what other jurisdictions are doing in this COVID environment, because it seems to be more particular to COVID. And to see if there's any other options that we could have. I, I think we understand the, the nature of the challenge, but it's causing challenges in our system as well. In terms of trying to collate and process the information and make sure council has all the information. And then making sure it's done in an economy manner. So one suggestion would be referral for a report.
Yeah, man, while I'm got the, Mr. Mayor, while I've got the floor, I just want to also point out that. It's basically, is this something that we would discuss in detail about one of our. Our CPC council, let's say, is it policy or priority sessions? If I may, there's a question to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it could be referred to, to that, or referred to staff and want to have a discussion under the. Greater discussion of the procedural bylaw, which we tend to review at least once or twice a term. It could be referred to that too. Okay, so we'll go through the speakers list. Still got councillor Richter, councillor Coontz and councillor Longford second time.
Actually, I think Mr. Mayor, councillor Coontz is first. I, I'll be speaking a second time too.
Thank you for that. Councillor Coontz.
Yeah, so if I could just make one suggestion and I think if, you know, we all get that, you know. Half an hour before the meeting and all of a sudden we get all this information. That we need to plow through really quickly. But maybe if there was one or two people who are comfortable with, you know, saying publicly like, hey, I need ten minutes. That we, that, that, you know, person could say to Wendy or email Wendy and say, look, I need ten minutes. Can you please let the chair know? Nobody needs to know. And, you know, if, if there is that, you know, overwhelming, you know, information that, you know. Probably everybody would appreciate an extra, you know, five or 10 minutes to go through that. I, I don't know how often that would happen, but it would at least provide a little bit of, you know. So if, if there was a person that wasn't comfortable, you know, saying, oh, I need some more time. But anyway, that's just a, a suggestion.
Thank you. Now councillor.
Yes, thank you. I, I like Mr. Backen's suggestion because I can see that this is. An issue that's going to have an impact on staff as well as on council. And I, I like the idea too of perhaps taking it to a CPC meeting. I know we've got some scheduled coming up for, I believe later this fall. So we can finally finish our procedure bylaw that's been in the works now for over two years. So I'm wondering if I could put forward the motion, please, that we refer this to staff. For a report on their ideas about how best to handle this. And I think once we get that staff report, we can take it from there to CPC. And define things like what constitutes substantive, what are, as councillor Long mentioned. Acceptable turnaround times, like maybe we need to get it at eleven if we're going to meet at one. So we've got the two hours. So I, I'd like to get staff's ideas on this. So that would be my motion, Mr. Mayor, to refer it to staff.
Move by councillor Richter and second by councillor Whitmarsh. Councillor Long, your hand is up, just before you.
Well, I'm glad, yeah, I was going to make the motion if it wasn't already. So I, I certainly support that. Staff have heard the concerns and, and we've outlined them and I would be very much looking forward to their solutions. I'm not in favor of sending it to CPC. I think staff could come back and they, they should probably come back very quickly. Because COVID is the cause of this, right? And so we have meetings in the next few weeks. So when it comes back to councils, hopefully we can have a recommendation that we can adopt right there and then. And maybe backing it back an hour is, is the answer. And, or, and taking, obviously I'm not scared to say anything. So I, I don't mind calling for a recess. Then I can make a sandwich at the same time. Anyway, I support the referral and I look forward to tasking staff. To come up with a solution to this problem and other communities are facing the same thing, I'm sure. So as Mr. Backen has said, let's find out what our other cities and towns are doing and do the best practice that we can. Thank you.
Councillor Davis.
Yeah, actually, I have, that, that sounds like I support, I don't, I don't, I personally don't want to see it go to CPP. I think that staff could do it on their own without, but councillor Coontz had a good idea. Backing it an hour later makes it later in the night, you know, like, so there is some real simple. Maybe solutions that have been brought up too. So that's a good idea. I'd support it.
Okay, seeing a further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Here is your answer. Move on.
Okay. All right. So whereas anticoagulant rodenticides can very negatively impact both animals and birds in the township of Langley. Due to secondary poisoning of predators that ingest poisoned rodents. Whereas significant township of Langley resident concern has been expressed to council members. About the use and impact of anticoagulant rodenticides on wildlife. As a result of a recent BCSPCA public campaign. Whereas township of Langley employees do not use rodenticides, but pest control contractors providing services to the township of Langley. For township properties and municipal infrastructure may be using anticoagulant rodenticides. And whereas the current township of Langley pest control contracts are due to expire at the end of this year, so December twenty twenty. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs staff to A. Request that current contractors stop the use of anticoagulant rodenticides. And B incorporate anticoagulant rodenticide prohibitions. As part of the preparation of the next request for proposals for pest control services in the township of Langley, ISOMO.
Thank you. Is there a second there?
I'll second that.
Councillor Anderson seconded it. Discussion.
Yes. Yes, I would like to speak to it. There was a very long and sustained campaign of letter writing over the summer that came out of a BCSPCA. Public advocacy campaign that they put on. And while I don't think that the approach that they took by upsetting the public to the extent that they did. Was the most professional thing they could have done. They could have actually made a delegation to council and explained their issue to us. And we could have wrestled with it at a council meeting. I do believe there is an underlying issue here and that is that. Birds and wildlife are getting poisoned through the use of this particular type of rodenticide. And I would like to see us not support the continued use of this type of anticoagulant rodenticide. Simply because the wildlife and the birds in the township are so very important to so very many residents. So that's why I've put this motion on and I hope council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitmarsh.
Uh, yeah, thanks councillor Richter for bringing this forward. It, it looks like something that we should be addressing. I certainly like the, the idea of it. I just had a question through to staff and, and. I, I'm very unfamiliar with catching rats, other than I've had a few on my own property that I had to catch. But I'm wondering if we were to move in this direction, I'm assuming that other methods. Of catching rats would include traps and, and different kinds of trapping and so on. And it. It just seems to me by, that it would be more expensive to do that kind. It would require more manpower to do that. So I'm just wondering if we have any idea what, how that would impact. Contracts that we might have with outside companies where we would require them to use something that might be. More labor intensive per se. And again, maybe it's not, I just don't know enough about it. And wondering if staff might have some perspective on the economics of this.
Uh, Mr. Sepe, are you able to shed some light on this? I know just my own thoughts is very difficult to deal with rodents and rodent control and. You know, it'd be nice to know what alternatives are to as equally effective.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for the question and the opportunity. Yes. What we are currently doing as reflected in councillor Richter's north of motion is utilizing contractors. Who are required A to follow best practices and B to obtain licenses that are necessary. For their methodology from the province and, and other bodies that are responsible for pest control management. That said, there are certainly other ways that things could be done. But because of the fact that we have not been directly involved with such alternative measures. The efficacy of them is unknown. So increased costs are certainly a reasonable expectation to have. As well as, I guess, the effectiveness of other measures. And I would suggest that even though the costs are likely minimal in the grand scheme of things. The efficacy of, of such alternative measures would best be understood and, and. I guess reported on after a period of, of testing, say, a, a, a year. Long process of. Trying different measures that would not include the use of anticoagulant rodenticides. And then report back to council as to their efficacy. So I suggest that if this was to be approved by council, then. Then we could report back in about a year and, and determine at that point whether this is something that is, is too costly and cost prohibitive. Or if it's something that is actually not working very well and we continue to have problems.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, worship. When I, as well as other councillors, saw the solicitation from. As, you know, the letters from the SPCA talking about the challenge to wildlife and the. Unreg, well, not unregulated, it is a regulated use, but the fact that, you know, broadly speaking, we are using a very toxic and poisonous. To the creature product in order to contain what others consider to be. Nuisance animal. And I know a recent headline said the township of Langley was, what do they call us? The seventh ratiest community. And, and I thought to myself, well, it's very difficult to compare communities. I don't know how you compare actually. Vancouver, which was number one to the township of Langley, because our conditions are much different. But for me, the general principle, and I understand that there likely would be some change in the fee structure. Because if you can't just use poison, then likely there could be some other pest management strategies that you'd use. And they could be more expensive. And I agree with Mr. Sepey that once communities have adopted these policies. They'll have a better idea about what the cost considerations could be. But I think that we need to start moving in this direction and I, I look at other instances historically where we've used DDT and other things. And, you know, we, we did it with impunity at one point, thinking that while it's eradicating the problem, it's relatively cheap. But what we come to understand is there is very negative implications here. So. I think that we should be moving towards this. I'm not saying that we need to start tomorrow. But I also couldn't underline enough from my point of view, the whole education strategy. I know that we have voluntary policies in the township of Langley, as others do. To try and educate people about how to contain and manage their properties. So as not to create further infestation, which can often happen simply because of land clearing and development. So I think it's a multi-pronged approach that we need to take, but I, I don't see any. Positive upside of continuing to use rodenticides when they are so detrimental in particular to wildlife. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Yeah, I have a lot of experience in this field. I could smell around a mile away, but it's, it's very complex. It's not a matter of cost either, I don't think. I mean, if it's a matter of cost, it'd be easy. You don't use these, these methods because you're trying to save money. You have to solve a problem and rats are a severe problem. They carry disease, all kinds of issues that come with it. So I don't know what the answer is, but I don't, I don't know is that we should be directing staff to do this or this or this. I don't know if I heard Mr. Sepey correctly, but maybe he was also saying that we should refer the issue to staff. To look into alternatives, to look at best practices again from other regions and, and come up with some suggestions on how we can. Be more responsible in using this, but it's, it's, to make a, a law or bylaw saying we're not going to use it as of tomorrow, kind of a thing. I, I, I think there will be many unintentional consequences as a result. And it is a very serious matter getting rid of rats. So I would be happy to make that motion. I see a bunch of hands up still. But I think we should do this as we did with the other one, refer to staff. They've heard the concerns. They see the notice of motion. Can they come back with some suggestions? Practices in terms of report, rather than giving them specific direction, which we really don't have the expertise to do. And it, it sounds really good and, and it probably is something that must be addressed. But that's not the silver bullet. It's not going to take care of the rat issue, which is even more serious. Than wildlife being poisoned, which is a sad situation as well. But there are those aspects of the problem that have to be explored.
Thank you. Councillor Coontz and then maybe we can look at how we do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this and I, I know rats are, can be a huge problem. But I'm reminded of what happened in the nineties with our bald eagle population. BC has one of the, the, you know, the bald eagle capital of North America, but there was a time when because of pesticides. The shells of the eggs would actually disintegrate. So there were no little babies being born and that was because of DDT. So if the BCSPCA is saying, look, this is, this is, you know, becoming a huge problem because of this. You know, I, I hope that, you know, we'll, we'll listen and that we'll find another way to take care of this problem. But yeah. I know rats, I don't want rats in my backyard and there's always one running across the fence. So anyway. That's in Brixton.
Run faster and capture it. There you go. So councillor Richter's next and I just blow my two bits. No, it's certainly in my occupation as a farmer for years and I'm sure councillor Davis can attest to this is a, it's a constant battle. I know this doesn't have anything to do with the agriculture, but it would be good to get, and, and also the, the way we're going today is. We're looking for better ways to deal with controlling these animals mainly. And so I certainly see this, but I would like to get more information back from staff or from, you know, they could. Query other municipalities, query the contractors, see what the options are, because the last thing we want is an infestation. But are there other ways to do it? So I think I agree with some comments that we maybe don't have enough information to make a decision today. But certainly we'd like to get information that would help enlighten all of us on a direction to go. Those are just my thoughts, councillor Richter. Perhaps you can wrap it up.
Yeah, no, and I, I think those are certainly fair comments. I, I just want to remind council though that. We can't control the use of anticoagulant rodenticides on ALR property. We can only control the use of it on our own township municipal properties and that's what this is geared to. So if we've got contractors going out to rec centers or playing fields that we own that aren't in the ALR. Or playing fields that we own that aren't in the ALR, then I think we have some ability to control it. I'm certainly very supportive of referring this to staff for a report. I don't necessarily rule out the use of rodenticides. I just rule out the use of anticoagulant rodenticides because it has this secondary impact. If a. Rodent or a rat has been poisoned with the anticoagulant rodenticides and are consumed by. Another creature, that that creature also suffers a secondary poisoning. So I would be very happy to send this to staff for a report. I think councillor Long suggested it. Mayor, certainly you have suggested it. As long as we can get a report back in time. To revise any requests for proposals. For. Contract services as we know, and I, I've certainly got this from in my discussions with Mr. Sepey. That our, our current pest control contracts are expiring. At the end of this year and we need to renew them. So I'd like to get a report back before we renew them. So.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor Ferguson.
Thank you. So councillor Richter moves. I take that as a motion to refer this back to staff to bring back information for council. Councillor Ferguson. Seconded. Any further discussion? Seen done, I'm going to call the question on the referral. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously. Councillor Richter.
Yes, I just wanted to put forward a notice of motion. I actually have. Put forward a written notice of motion and I sent it to the clerk and the administrator. On Friday of this past week, but I just wanted to let. Council know that it would be coming forward under notices of motion for our meeting next week. And it concerns the process. Around the replacement of the Fort Langley pool with a splash park. And I'm hoping that council will be supportive when you read this notice of motion. About opening up. The discussion for public input and then perhaps seeing the need or not seeing the need after we've had public input. To maybe reconsider the decision to put a splash park in there. So just a heads up for all of council. Thank you.
No further business?
Information, your worship.
Councillor Long.
Yeah, was the report regarding the plans for the Fort Langley pool ever released to the public?
Yes, it was. So that report could perhaps, if staff could have that report accompanied. Next meeting or distribution list for all of our refreshment.
Yeah, maybe it could be circulated even sooner. I, I'm sure I can find it.
Yeah, you can find, yeah, but it has been released. Thank you. Okay, so now I look for a motion to resolve the special polls meeting. Is there anything on table? It's on the agenda. Items, a motion please.
Motion.
Whitmarsh, second by councillor Davis. Add anything? Seen none of, of councillor Richter.
Yeah, no, I, I think we got a request for late delegation. Or maybe there was something that came through. A video that just came through relative to. Possible delegation.
That's the, there's an existing delegation with now an addition.
Okay, so all right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll see councillor Ferguson.
Can I add a personnel issue? Item?
Personnel's added. Anybody else? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried unanimously. Motion terminated.
Termination.
Councillor Davis, second by councillor Long. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you. The meeting is terminated. We'll take how many minutes? Five minutes.